So I have a little statement that I'm going to read at the beginning. If you're going to be here for multiple interviews, you'll hear it a few times, but I want to read the same kind of housekeeping rules to everyone so that they understand the process. So it being about 6:00 PM on January 10th, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 10th Special Select Board Meeting. The purpose of our meeting tonight and Thursday is to interview the four finalists recommended by the selection committee for the town manager position in Foxborough. We're interviewing candidates in alphabetical order. Tonight, we'll interview John Coder and Ted Langel. Nick Riccio and Chris Senior will be interviewed on Thursday, January 12th. So thank you to Bernie and the screening committee for helping us get from a pool of 30 applicants down to the four finalists. While cable access is here this evening recording the meeting, programming will not be released until the interviews are complete. It may even be, you know, the night that we deliberate. So our next meeting for regular business, if anyone's here for that, is January 17th. So with that, I would like to thank you for your time and interest this evening and joining us here in Foxborough. We'd like to think we're a special community and are passionate about making sure we find the right replacement for Bill Keegan, who will be retiring in the next few months. We're excited that you're here and we're eager to hear more from you. We've scheduled approximately one hour for each interview. The board will go around asking you scenario-based questions, and I've asked Bernie to help keep us on track timing-wise, so for the board and for you answering. Specific examples and scenario from your past are encouraged in your answers. Public participation and questions from the audience is not permitted during the interview process. Everyone here has reviewed your resume in advance of tonight's meeting. Due to time restraints, I'll ask each board member to make like 30-second introductions, you know, whether it's your name, your background, your time on the board. And then I'll just hand it over to Bernie for some quick words. So we tend to just kind of go straight down the line with most things, so.
Mark Elsman, been on the board, it's my third term, seventh year.
Sounds good. Dennis Keefe, I'm the rookie on the boards, my first year, just getting my feet wet, but really enjoying the process. I come from a healthcare background predominantly and have a lot of experience in leadership and management and things of that nature.
Great.
Leah Gibson, I'm in my second term, I think it's my fifth year now on the board. And I come from an HR consulting background, so global benefits, broking, sales operations, process procedure, things like that.
Okay, Stephanie Begowen, I am just finishing my first term. My end of third year is done this spring. I work in the food service industry.
Seth Ferguson, we met each other several years ago at a Mass Municipal Association meeting, obviously, so full disclosure there. Been on the board, this, the select board for, this is my third year, and prior to that advisory committee experience and financial experience in my day job, so, welcome.
Great.
All right, great. So Bernie, I don't know if you have a couple of quick words you want to say, but just Bernie has helped us draft the position statement, the desired qualifications, the job posting, he helped with the screening committee process, and he did the background check. So anything else free to add?
Not much. I just wanted to thank John for being here, and as the chair pointed out, they have a number of questions. Any specific examples you can give as you answer those questions? And I'll jump in with any follow-up questions that might help the board as they go through their process, and I'll be watching the clock, so, thank you.
All right, any questions from you before we begin on the process?
No questions, just want to thank you for having me in. It's a real honor to be considered for the position.
All right, great. So with that, we'll dive right into it, and if you see us, we're taking some notes along the way and just watching the clock as well, so. So thank you for your interest in Foxborough. As I've said, please take a couple of minutes to tell us why you were interested in the position and why you believe you'll be successful here in Foxborough.
Okay. Well, first of all, you know from my resume, I've got, I'm a seasoned manager. I have over 25 years of municipal management experience in Massachusetts. I've had the pleasure of serving in the last 14 years as Northborough's town administrator, where, you know, we as a community have been able to achieve and sustain a level of success for the, over the last decade in terms of our operating, our capital budgets, our economic development, and honestly, the thing I'm most proud of, our culture, both inside Town Hall and outside of Town Hall. I'm at a point in my career where, you know, I have two children who are now in college. I no longer have, am tied to volleyball and baseball schedules. I have great, I have, family is very important to me, so my children, I've never missed anything. I've never missed a game, I've never missed a teachers' conference, nothing like that. But now they're grown, and Northborough is in fantastic shape. And to be honest, I'm ready for another challenge. Now, Northborough and Foxborough are very comparable in terms of their size, budgets, and complexity, with the exception of Gillette Stadium, which honestly is something that is very unique and intriguing to me. But, you know, I did have the pleasure of coming in and meet with this board back in, back in August. We spent some time together talking about ways that Foxborough could maybe enhance their financial planning and communication tools. And I just believe that my skill set and my background, I'd like to have a further conversation tonight about how my other set of skill sets and other experience and things can maybe benefit this community as well. I think one of the things that makes me a really good fit for this community is frankly, you know, my personality. I always look at what a community's personality is, and having a chance to have interacted with you folks kind of outside of this process before I ever contemplated that I might apply for the job, as I say to my resume after we met, I'm intrigued, and that's why I'm here.
All right, great.
How do you go about setting long-term goals for yourself in the organization? And how do you use data in the management of your organization?
That's a great question. You know, I'm very, I'm a very data-driven manager, as you probably have figured out. One of the things that I always strive for is getting consensus. People have different opinions and different values, and you're bringing these broad spectrum together in one place, and you're trying to get them to decide as a community where you want to go. So first thing I do is I always want to make sure that our information is good and accurate. And you want to make sure also that you have a good process, a process that is both equitable and transparent. But really, to get to the root of answering the question, it's about making sure that you take the time on the front end to get agreement on where it is that you all want to go. And it could be through a long-term financial planning, forecasting models. Most recently, in the town of Northborough, we went through a master plan of development. We have since honed in on our priority being our downtown. This might sound a little familiar to you folks, but we have a downtown visioning process. It's about halfway completed right now. And, you know, when you talk about development and, you know, people have strong feelings. You know, you want to maintain that balance of your quaint New England town, very similar to Northborough and Foxborough, but you want economic development. You want to be able to balance things out and subsidize the tax burden. But you want that development to be done in a way that is thoughtful, in a way that is balanced, so that people feel like the character of the community is maintained, but it's, you have a vibrant business community, and you have enough population and density in the right places to support that business community. And those are the discussions that we've had. But we really, it's about getting those strategic plans in place, and that's what, sort of, as a funnel. You start with a lot of community input, you funnel down, you decide what your goals and objectives are. And then from there, that's where people like me help you out. You know, our job then is to take those, your vision for your community, and lay out a plan for how best to implement that.
I think you've sort of answered part two to my question, but I'm going to say it anyway, see if you have anything more to add. Do you have specific experience in creating or implementing a strategic plan for your community?
Yeah, so again, financial plans, a big one for us is, you know, having a real capital plan. You know, I work with a number of communities to help them develop capital plans. In most instances, it's the first time you try to do it, it's a wish list, and you really want to make sure that the departments have some reasonable assuredness that if you have a six-year plan and their project is in there, that, you know, things will move around a little bit. It's a plan, it's not set in stone, it's a dynamic document. But you want to make sure that they have a reasonable assuredness that they're going to get those projects done. And then as a, as a policy board, you want to make sure that when you're standing up at town meeting, you're confident that when you tell people, "We can afford this," or it's, "This will be the impact," that you're doing it not from an emotional standpoint of, "Yes, I care about the school," or "I care about the library, the senior center," whatever the project is, but from a data-driven standpoint, you can not only, you can not only show it, but you can prove that we, as a corporate entity, you know, can afford this project. And more importantly, if you do it well, you can say, "This is the time to do it." And a quick example of that, we completed a $25.5 million renovation addition to an elementary school. Now, this is a neighborhood school, so nobody, everybody isn't going to go, everybody goes to a middle school and a high school, right? But unless it's your neighborhood school, you may or may not care. We presented this to town meeting, we showed it as part of a collective plan. We showed it was part of our forecasting models. We proved that as an entity, we can afford it. And I'm proud to say it was almost unanimously approved at town meeting. It was 80% at the ballot, it was a debt exclusion. And that project went off without a hitch, and we finished on time and 1.38 million under budget.
Does anybody else have any follow-ups?
I have a follow-up.
Yes, sir.
In terms of developing your actual strategic plan and doing a strategic plan, do you have a particular process, a structure that you use to really develop that? Like a SWOT analysis or something along those lines?
Depending on the, I mean, clearly, something like a master plan of development is something that very few communities do that on their own. You would typically develop a scope of services, working with the various boards and committees, and you'd hire a consultant to help work you through. But in that scope of services, you want to make sure that you're casting a very broad net. And one of the things that's difficult in public policy settings is making sure that you're not just hearing from the vocal few. Even if you agree with them, you want to cast a broad net, and you want to use multiple tools. Things, everything from focus groups to surveys, public input sessions. You want to seek also, of course, input from the sitting members of the boards and committees. They've made a commitment to your community, they're serving now. You want to know what they, what they think. On the front end, you want to use, I guess, the largest input process that you can. But then ultimately, like in the case of Northborough, you have to filter it down to, okay, so we have all of these priorities, and some of them are competing, some of them are more critical than others. You then have to have a further process to refine that. In our case, we formed a, an implementation committee that then did another round of community input to determine, in our case, the two things that came out were downtown revitalization, and the other was that they just want to see more walkability, more, more complete streets processes whereby, you know, you have multimodal transportation, walkers, bikers, traffic, and just general walkability of the key sections, primarily the downtown in Northborough. So in terms of the process, again, when we do things like our capital planning and our forecasting, making sure that we get agreement on the data, and then it's trying to involve as many people in that process as possible. It's not perfect, no public policy process is, and at the end of the day, somebody's not going to get what they want. But what you hope, and what we should always strive for, is that people do feel like they were listened to and that they were, their input was valued. And ultimately, democracy is somewhat of a majority rule, not entirely. You know, we have an obligation to, to make sure that people who maybe aren't as vocal, you know, get represented.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. If anybody has any other follow-up.
No, I think, I think we'll kind of keep moving through them unless there's a really critical follow-up.
Okay, sweet. John, describe your leadership style and give examples of your approach to working with a team and leading change in an organization and a community.
So leadership style, if you're a really good manager, you don't have one way that you do things. Often, it's situational. It depends on the situation, and it depends on the other folks. There are some things in terms of continuity that flows through it, and that is, you know, being a good listener, being ethical, people feeling like you are trustworthy. The biggest thing when it comes to leadership in the 25 years that I've been doing this is whether or not people trust you. Do they feel like you're being honest? You'll make mistakes, everybody does, but if they feel like you're being, you're operating in good faith, and they trust you, that's, that's the primary. As far as leading teams, you know, everything that we do, I'm a big fan of ad hoc teams that focus on different things. A great example of this, and by the way, I did provide you with a handout tonight, but it has a lot of the things that I'm talking about tonight, in terms of primary accomplishments. I've just, I've outlined them for you, so maybe afterwards you don't have to take quite so many notes. But, but in terms of that type of a process, the best example that I can give you of that would be the COVID pandemic. We brought together a cross-functional team, created a task force that met on a weekly basis, and we dealt with all of the issues, both communication and response, through that team. And one of the things I'm very proud of is, you know, when you get through any sort of a crisis, one of the things that I like to do with my team is, at the end, is you stop and you do a hot wash afterwards, what went well? What could we improve upon? And you do it in a way that doesn't create a, you know, people feeling defensive. When we went through that process after the pandemic, you know, we admitted, you know, we weren't, we didn't have all the answers. And anybody who says that they did during that pandemic, including the folks at the state, I would, I would question. But the thing that came out of that was, the one thing consistently that everybody said was, "I felt supported," and I felt like, and I felt like the relationships and the trust that we have amongst our management team was so strong that we were able to just overcome the things that we weren't prepared to manage. And, and when, I think the most important thing is creating and maintaining that structure where people feel trusted and supported. And as I said, they'll make mistakes and things will come up that you're just not going to have an answer to. But if that, if the culture is there, you'll be able to overcome it. And, and that was probably the best answer I could have asked for from, from the management team in terms of, in terms of how we did with regard to that crisis.
Other follow-ups?
Okay. So moving on to financial management, so John, I know you're friends with Bill Keegan, our current town manager, and so he's probably told you some stuff about this board, and yet you're still here, so that's, I think that's a good sign. But anyway, so as far as financial management, these questions are sort of tailor-made for, for me, actually. So we're interested in your experience with municipal finance and budget preparation, and so specifically, how do you work with your finance team to integrate strategic planning into budget development?
Okay, well, you all should know upfront that I'm a budget nerd. I usually, I usually start by telling people, if you're not excited about budgeting, either you're not doing it right, or you don't understand that it is the means to the end for everything that you want to see happening in your community. As you all know, I have a very extensive experience with financial forecasting, financial trend monitoring, capital planning. I'm pleased to tell you, in the town of Northborough, we have received over a decade of consecutive national awards for our budget. I routinely make presentations to the Mass Municipal Association. I'm an annual trainer for the Association of Town Finance Committees. That's where you and I probably encountered each other many years ago. I do, I also teach a section of a class at Suffolk University that's sponsored by the MMA to encourage the next generation of financial managers to come forward and to start taking leadership roles. As you know, there's not a lot of town accountants or finance people out there. I have my, we're not a big, we're not a big organization. One of the things that you have, I think that is a great asset here, is you have an independent finance director. My finance director is also my full-time town accountant. But my financial team, the core team, consists of myself, the assistant town administrator, the finance director slash town accountant, and the treasurer collector. And all the things that we've accomplished over the last decade, and some of those team members have cycled in and out. I'm pleased to say, you know, we lost our treasurer to retirement. You know, can't blame, blame them for that, right? But I was able to recruit an excellent replacement, and she was in one of the classes that I was teaching, and she said, "I want to come here because I'm going to learn the right way to do things," and, and she was excited about growing herself professionally. So our team meets on a regular basis, and over, over the years, what we've done is, we start, we took different components of the budget, similar to what you've been working on here, is, and we just focused on, this year, we're focused on the operating budget. Another year, it's the capital. Another year, we're really going to focus on trend monitoring. Then we're going to talk about, you know, focus on forecasting. And it's incremental improvement, you know? You can't go from zero to 100 overnight. But if you have a good team, and you have a good vision, and you, in terms of a strategic plan, where it is that you want to go, and you have the support of the boards and committees, then you incrementally, you get there. And we've, we've got there 10 years ago, 11 years ago. We've continued to make improvements. You know, one of the great things about GFOA Distinguished Budget Award is it's only good for one year, as you know. And if you fail to make additional improvements, you won't receive it. So receiving that consecutively, year after year, tells you that you are, you're constantly increasing that bar for yourself, your team, and your, and your community.
So I think I know what the answer is going to be, but you've had the, you've been awarded, you know, the top level of, for your budget presentation, and you've, financial trend monitoring has been humming for a long time. Are you excited to start all over again? Or, I mean, we have a lot in place, but it would be basically, there's a lot, and I know there's an incremental approach, but there's a lot to do with Marie's here from our finance team, and so she's going to be instrumental in the processes.
I saw your presentation, you did a great job.
Yep. So you excited for that, or are you like, "Oh, my God."
Yeah, well, you know what, you're not starting, this is not starting from zero. You know, Foxborough, Foxborough is a high-performing organization, and like any high-performing organization, you, there's always another level. You're never done. And so I'm, you know, I'm excited to come to a town that has the resources, has a finance director, but also has enough in place that I can really hit the ground running and make, in my opinion, a very fast, very significant contribution to your organization. You're not starting off with, you can't close out the prior fiscal year, you don't know what your free cash, it's not, you're not coming in doing a forensic audit to figure out where the money is because, you know, you're, you're not there. You're, you're kind of where Northborough was, and then before we took it really to the next level. So I think the community of Foxborough and myself are perfectly matched for that, that next phase. And I love, as you can tell, you know, I love teaching, and I love working with boards and committees. I do this on my own time for free, you know? I don't get paid to do, I just met with the City Councilors Association about a month ago, following, you know, the town finance committees, Association of Town Finance Committees. I don't get paid for any of that. I do it because I'm truly passionate about local government. Where local government works, there's nothing like it. And if you want to serve your community, you can do it at the state or the federal level. But if you want to walk outside and say, "We did that, we did that, that park," there's nothing like the local level. There's nothing like it.
So just lastly, John, and I, it sounds like Northborough is in a similar situation. I don't know the financial situation is super well, but some towns, the financial strategic decisions are easy because the answer is no, because there's no funds. And so Foxborough has, is going to have challenging strategic decisions to make and budget decisions to make. And so is that different than what you have in Northborough? Or, I mean, is Northborough, I don't really care about Northborough, but I'm just, as far as your experience.
Yeah.
How does, how does a Foxborough feel to you in terms of being able to make those tough strategic decisions? And sometimes the answer, more often than not, we need, we're investing to, you know, to make smart investing decisions, strategically speaking, so.
So I'll share with you, when I started in Northborough, we were at the limits of Prop 2.5. As a community, we had to decide what was our, what we were going to do, sort of what was our long-term strategy. And we focused on economic development. We had two very large areas in town, in excess of 100, 150 acres contiguous, that we wanted to, to plan. And so working with planning board and working with developers, we, we were able to attract and build during a recession a, over 600, 700,000 square foot mall. I know Gillette Patriot Place is 1.3 million square feet. But it was something just shy of that that we were able to put in. And we did it in a way in a corner of a town that just fit perfectly. It didn't disrupt the downtown feel. It was right off of Route 9. And when those new revenues came in, and we had, we've had years of very successful economic development, and as those revenues came in, we didn't spend everything. So we went from being at the limits of Prop 2.5, making those difficult decisions every year that this is it, this is what we have to spend unless you want to go for an override. The most difficult position to be in is oftentimes, you're not, you really only need another $100,000 or $50,000, and on an $89 million budget, arguably, it's negligible. But just to get that, you'd have to go for an override. Sitting here today, we're about 4 point, in Northborough, we have about 4.9 million in excess levy capacity. So over, over that last 10 years, when we did all that great budget stuff, we had all that economic development, we've expanded services, we actually did not tax to the limits of Prop 2.5. We went from the 53rd highest tax bill in the state down to the 63rd. And those generally, those rankings generally don't move more than you go up and down between the people above and below you. We had a very sustained conservative budget. We kept the taxes on the, on the businesses, as well as the residents, at a sustainable level of less than $200 a year. Some things are impacting, same thing that's impacting you. You know, state aid is not keeping pace with your budget increases, and we talked about that. So you're going to see, as things start shifting, there's a lot of pressure on the municipal, on the tax bill. But one thing that you have, I don't know where you stand. I know I read your master plan, it's, it's getting ready for updating. At the time, you had about 23%, 2,900 acres of, you know, of developable land. I'm sure it's far less than that now. However, you do have opportunities. I read you got grant funding to put an extension of sewer up Route 9. So I think if you do those things well, again, doing development, appropriate development in the appropriate place, working with the neighbors and the residents, that, that's how you're going to get some additional capacity. In the long run, everybody, let's just face it, Prop 2.5 is an arbitrary and capricious limit. It's really not based on anything. Over time, as you reach build-out and you become a mature community, everybody will start bumping up against that, and then you have to talk about, you know, redevelopment. But in Northborough, we were conservative in our budgets, and we had an economic development plan that we implemented to great success. And the result was, we stabilized the tax bills, and we, and we have excess levy capacity. So on an annual basis, as we, as Northborough, whether I'm not, I'm there still or not, as Northborough reaches build-out and they reach maturity, they're going to be able to draw from that to maintain and stabilize their, you know, their services, which is really the goal. You don't want to have wild swings, and you don't want to be going back to the voters every year. So if you can stabilize these things with long-term plans and strategies, in my opinion, that's the, that's the best route.
Thanks, John.
Sure.
I have one quick question. What's your thought process of using free cash for operating budget?
Well, so again, I'll give you an example. When I started in Northborough, we used to use about $1.5 million in free cash into our operating budget. Now, clearly, that, there's nothing illegal about that, but it's not a best practice. And so I met and I talked with the financial boards and committees, and the financial team, and the appropriations committee to get collectively, we discussed this, like, is this something that makes sense for us? When the recession hit, and I'm going all the way back to like 2004, I've managed through multiple recessions and pandemic, right? So I've seen good times, I've seen bad times. When the, when that recession hit, we were caught. You know, I had just started in Northborough, I wasn't a manager yet. But those things you remember, and you don't want to get caught again. My philosophy is very, I know you have a free cash plan here. In Northborough, we had agreement amongst all the boards and committees through a collaborative process that we weren't going to use more than 1% of one-time revenues in our operating budget. And so we capped free cash for us at about a half a million dollars. What's interesting about that is, when we implemented that, I, I went with our, as a group, you know, we went and met with the school committee. The school committee, at the time, if you think they're 70, you know, roughly, they're typically 70% of your budget. They were going to be the ones that, on the front end, would, maybe would be constrained because 70% of that money would be disappearing. We talked with them about how that money then can be diverted to funding capital projects and think, other things that they wanted and desired, in the long run, would we be able to get? The school committee agreed. This was part of our comprehensive financial policy I put in place when I first started in, as the town administrator. You know, fast forward today, we've invested over $20 million in pay-as-you-go capital. So we have not financed a fire engine, a police cruiser, a $250,000 DPW truck in, since, you know, fiscal 2012. In the long run, you know, the financial, you know, financial trend monitoring, what's your financial condition? You know this in your personal lives, if you stop charging the credit cards, you pay it off, and then you it off, and then you start paying cash for some smaller things, you are in a much better financial position. And you're a much better financial position to withstand things that, recessions or pandemics or storms, things that you, you don't have any control over. So that's, that's been, that was our approach. I know you have a similar approach here, but the Department of Revenue has really come out and advocated very strongly that, to the extent possible, you really want to minimize your reliance on one-time revenues in your operating budget. Yes, no, I always, whenever I talk about these things, I always relate it to people's personal lives. You know, if you get a windfall of one-time money, you then don't buy a bigger house, you know, you don't, you know, ups, up your lifestyle on a permanent basis. You know, you, you put it towards ideally, things that are going to make you better off in the next five, you know, five-plus years. And I think collaboratively, working with the boards, all the boards and committees and the financial team, having those discussions not in the throes of a budget cycle or a budget debate, it's time for people to listen, and you get that consensus. And now, I think I told you the story, a town meeting, somebody made a motion to use free cash to fund operating positions, and, and the department stood up and spoke against it and said, that's not a best practice. So it's, it's tough in the beginning. In the long run, I think people see the benefit. Once they, once you do it, and the, once you do it once, and you start seeing the benefit, that's when people are like, okay, this makes sense, we understand why we're doing it.
I think this is an important question, so I probably wouldn't spend as much time on others, but did you have a follow-up?
I, I do, yeah. I, I was just curious, maybe it was in your documentation, I missed it, what your bond rating is?
We are AA1. So under, during my tenure, our bond rating was increased. That's, that's Moody's, that's Moody's bond rating. Moody tends to be a little bit more stringent. Standard and Poor's is, Moody's is very stringent. When we go out, what I look at, when we go out to bond, we're getting interest rates at or better than AAA communities. And in the documentation that I provided you, one of the things that the bond rating agency commented on was our, our, our long-term management plans, our policies, and the stability in our financial team as a, as a big reason why our bond rating is so solid.
All right, great, Steph. All right, great. Okay, so the town has a number of projects in, in the pipeline, our Taylor Elementary School renovation, a potential new community center, and a DPW facility. Please tell us about your direct experience with managing capital improvement projects or other major municipal projects and initiatives.
I love capital projects. I'll just say that right out of the gate. I love it. I love working with architects, project managers. Again, everything that we do is a team effort. We always form a building committee. Some towns have standing building committees, some do ad hoc, we do ad hoc. And we, we bring people from different boards and committees together, members of the public. In my, in my tenure, we've done a library building project, a renovation addition, a senior center, a new senior center building, and most recently, we just completed the $25.5 million Lincoln Street Elementary School project. I was the primary staff for all of those, all of those projects. Clearly, it's a, it's a team and a group effort, but working, negotiating the contracts, helping the boards and committees do go through the owner's project manager, designer selection procedures, and then just being involved in the, in the day-to-day project management. All of those projects, by the way, went off beautifully, and I would encourage you, if you took, come see our senior center, it's absolutely beautiful. It's one of the things that I'm most proud of. I mentioned to you, like, local government, I can go see that project and know that I was a part of that, you know, with my community. I'll share with you, in terms of my knowledge of public buildings, it goes beyond, you know, we're not just, you know, I've been in town while projects were done. These were projects that I was the primary liaison to them. When we did our library building project, we passed over the low bidder and wound up in court. You're not supposed to go to court, but somehow they managed to get there. We wrote a 36-page report that ultimately got the case thrown out of court. And if you go to get your MCPo certification, this is your State Public Procurement Officer certification, they actually used the Town of Northborough versus Barr Incorporated as a instructive case for how to pass over low bidders. You know, it's a, it's a tough thing when you're working in the public sector. You know, I've had 80 hours plus of training in order, I always talk, takes 80 hours in the state of Massachusetts to legally buy number two pencils, you know? You have to be certified to, to go through this process. But it's one thing to be certified, it's another, another to have the experience enough so that you've done enough of these projects to know, that won't ever happen again, we're going to get out ahead of this, and have the confidence. And I'll tell you the best thing about my experience in Northborough, when we, when we passed over the low bidder, all the boards and committees were unanimous in support of, of us doing that. Because they, we had communicated to them what we were doing, why were we doing it. Oftentimes, in the public bid process, if they feel like the town isn't on the same page, or maybe the board of select, select boards divisive amongst themselves, and not everybody's in support of a project, they'll mind that. And so towns don't want to create controversy. We took that fight on head-on, and I'm proud to say, our community, we came out on top. And it's a, it's a case that is cited now in anybody who gets certified as a procurement officer. And so I'm proud of that.
Like a lot of towns, Foxborough is heavily unionized. So we're interested in your experience in collective bargaining. What has been your role specifically in labor negotiations? And using an example, describe your approach in managing in a unionized environment. And, and I would specifically want to know, were you at the table during negotiations?
Sure, absolutely. So by charter, I am the negotiating entity for the town's collective bargaining. That is, of course, working with the Board of Selectmen. The first thing I always want to do before I try to go off and implement anything is make sure that the policy boards and committees are all on the same page, that we know where it is that we want to end up. So I've been doing labor negotiations for 25 years in Massachusetts, and some in Connecticut before that. We've had very successful contract negotiations. Generally, they go smoothly. We went to the JLMC once over the 24-hour shift in the fire department because the policy boards and committees were not in favor of it, so we had to work through that. But I'm at the table, the assistant town administrator, who's the HR director, is at the table, and then typically, the department head, if it's police or fire, they're at the table as well. If the union doesn't use counsel, we don't use counsel, we generally are able to get these things done, you know, on our own. But then I think, you know, one of the things I would point out, what really tells you what your relationship is with the employees, is when you need something and you're not at the table. And the, probably the best example of that, and it's in the handout that I gave you, is we have actively managed our health insurance budget by going out and speaking and working with the employees. And I've been able to get, and the town, our, our team has been able to get everybody together, the teachers as well as public safety, and we've been able to make changes and modifications to our health insurance when needed over the years. We've been able to maintain a high level of benefit, but the average for the last decade of my health insurance budget is 2.88%. The increase, the average increase year to year. And those discussions take place outside of full-table negotiations. In every contract, we've written in that they will at least meet with me and have a discussion if health insurance comes in at 10%, say, and it's a budget budget for us. They've always come to the table in good faith, and because we have, one of the benefits of being somewhere for a long time is, I go back to what I talked about, that level of trust. The first time, the first time we did it, the, the rep for the MTA, the Teachers Association, was just dead set against doing that. After we completed it and we came back and needed to do something a second time, he came to me privately and said, you know what, John, I was wrong, you were right on this, I'm going to help you do this moving forward because I believe you, you really are trying to do what's in the best interest of the employees in the town. That was, for me, a pivotal, a pivotal moment that, that, you know, I knew we were all working together. And we've been able to make those modifications, you know, I try, we try not to do it, you know, you don't want to exhaust people every year doing it, but, but, you know, every two or three years, you might have to tweak plan design, or consolidate carriers, or most recently, go out to bid. The most recent bid that we did, not only did we work with our employees to, to do this, and they had a seat at the table through the Insurance Advisory Committee, but we, we reached out to the Town of Southborough, we share the regional high school. So the, the regional high school is a separate legal entity in the Town of Southborough. Together, we formed a joint procurement association, and we went out, and we wound up with a 1% increase in our health insurance. It's been, it's been very successful.
Coming back to managing in a union environment, what was your, what has your experience been with grievances?
Very, very few. I have no, sitting here today, and again, it's in the handout, and I want to keep saying that, but I, we have no employee-related litigation or grievances as I sit here today. We've never, in my tenure, and it's been there a long time, 14 years as a manager, we've never been the subject of an MCAD complaint or wrongful termination. Generally, if there's a disagreement, we try to handle it at the appropriate level. And, and one of the things is that if we're, if we've implemented something wrong, or we did something wrong, it's important to admit that we did it, we, we shouldn't have done that, or we could have done it differently, and you, and you correct it. We have had a handful of grievances over the years, but it's, and we've, but we've been able to manage those. If you have a good contract and you have good trust, when there is a disagreement, you can oftentimes, it never gets to that formal process.
Right, good. All right, I think I'm still on here. Maybe you could talk about your general performance evaluation system, and how you use it really to impact morale, impact performance, impact accomplishment of targets and things of that nature. How is it used as a tool in the organization?
Sure. So we complete performance evaluations on all employees. Our performance evaluation system is a little, maybe a little different. On July 1, people get a cost of living increase, and our performance evaluation system allows them to receive a merit increase on January 1st. So it's offset from the regular budget cycle. And so working with department heads, going through and providing appropriate and timely feedback to, to folks. And as part of that performance evaluation, there are, there's a section in the back highlighting, you know, strengths that people have, but also things that we would like them to, to, to work on. And it's up to the manager, we always say, you know, performance evaluation doesn't happen on January 1st, it happens consecutively for the 12 months prior, giving continuous feedback to folks so they know where they are and, and what the expectations are. And so that's the process that we use. And one of the things, it's funny, I remember Mary in her presentation was talking about GFOA. One of the things that GFOA is requiring now is linking throughout the organization from the board of, the, the select board's goals and objectives, your strategic goals and objectives, to the departments and down to the employees. And showing that linear link up and down the organization. Now, we, we're not perfect at this, I'll tell you, I'll be honest right now, that it, it takes time and energy and work. But the point of it is, is that as a, as an entity, we, we agreed that this is the level we, that's the next continuous improvement that we want to do. We want to strengthen that up and down link between the overarching goals and how it filters down to the department head level. But equally as important, you know, the person at the front, frontline in any organization, they need to know, and they want to know, how does, how does me processing this support the organization? What's, how does my role link up to what it is we're trying to achieve as an organization? And it's amazing to me how hard people are willing to work and the things that they're willing to do when they feel like their work has purpose and meaning, and that it's appreciated.
I'm going to pass on any other questions. Any follow-ups?
Seth, we've kind of covered some of your next one.
Yeah. I was going to say, so the next question's on land use and development, and you talked about projects already, schools, senior center, talked about the balance of growth with maintaining sort of the small-town feel, so that gets at a lot of this question.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
You know, again, I'll just stress, the, I always want to have a bigger process with a lot of input, then you filter it down to really what you're going to focus on. And then when you start moving and you're implementing, and people are like, why are we doing this and not that? You are able to point back to, well, this is the process, this is how we got to where we are. And I guess it, sometimes it's, you, people don't always get what they want, and sometimes you have to say no, but the important thing for me is to have a rationale. Well, because this is how we do, or this is the way we've always done it. You want to have a rationale, and you want to be able to point to a fair, equitable, and transparent process that got you to where you are today, implementing this specific initiative. And if you do that well, and people feel like, well, it's a good process, and they have access to it, again, they might not always agree with everything that you're doing, but they feel like they, they feel like they have a seat at the table, and I think that's very important when it comes to public policy.
All right, great. Doc?
As Foxborough's town manager, you would have relationships with many individuals and groups, including employees, citizens, local, county, and state officials, as well as colleagues throughout the region, you know, even expanded from the stadium, you know, all the way down to the new bagel shop that just opened up down on Route 1. Please tell us how you build and maintain professional relationships, and if possible, include specific examples of how you have done this in your current or past roles.
That's a great question. You succeed or fail in this business by your character, your, the trust of your character and the relationships. If people like you and they trust you, it's amazing how, how supportive they will be and how forgiving they will be when you inevitably do make a mistake. I provided to Bernie, your consultant, references, the references I chose were people that I have worked with for 20 years, or oftentimes, or 10-plus years. Examples are, you know, I have a relationship, a 20-year relationship with the president of, in, in the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. And every initiative that they've done, every, every ribbon cutting, we've worked together, we've worked together for 20 years, and I worked with the prior director as well. I think what you want to always look for is a pattern. What's the pattern? When I'm, I, I worked through three superintendents, I wanted you to call every one of them. I only put the last two, but I wanted you to talk to every one of them. I wish you could talk to every one of my former board members. Because what you'll see is a pattern of consistency, of, of respect and trust. And I view, you know, I'll be honest with you, when I started in Northborough, I wasn't planning to be there as long as I, as I was. It's a great community, and it worked, and it went so well that I stayed longer, you know, I was going to go on and be a city manager. What I found is, there's a stickiness to communities our size. You know, if you're too small, you work in a community that's very small, you wind up being the chief cook and, and bottle officer, as they say. When you move up to a city, you're, oftentimes, it's more of a political sort of function that you, you serve. I think the sweet spot of Foxborough is that you are, you're big enough that you have enough exciting things going on. You know, a manager wants to do things. I want to work in a community that has resources and the capacity to, to do exciting and innovative things. I don't want to just come forward and put a budget together that talks about how we have to cut everything this year, or, you know, we, there's nothing to, to, to build, there's no projects. So I think Foxborough is that, is that sweet spot. But to answer the question directly is, it's, it's about forming these trust, trusting honest relationships and working relationships with people and honoring those. And over time, that trust allows you to accomplish so much. And, and one of the things that I'm very proud of in Northborough is, we have built that, that level of trust between the various boards and committees, and the school department, and the general government. When I started, it was, it was, it was not a good situation. And by, again, giving good information, good process, explaining why we're doing what we're doing, removing free cash out of the operating budget, why you're doing things that constrain things that otherwise they would support. But if they feel like you're being honest and you're giving them good information, that trust builds, and the next time you come back, like the health insurance, the union member that adamantly fought me the first time came back and was the biggest proponent of making plan design changes that reduce benefits for his employees, for his, his constituency... for his, his constituency, because he knew, in the long run, that little nip and tuck was in their best interest, because we didn't go to the GIC, we didn't cut. We were able to maintain those services. But that, he's got to trust, there has to be trust.
If I could jump in on this, John. One of the, related to the external relationships, uh, you know, many communities have this to some extent, but Foxborough perhaps more so than others. You know, the, the large institutions, uh, you know, the medical facilities here in town, the, obviously, Patriots Place, Gillette, the involvement of state government, uh, related to Route One and, uh, the MBTA stop. Do you have experiences that you could relate that would sort of illustrate how you build relationships or how you work with, um, state, private, uh, regional entities, large organizations?
Absolutely. So, um, again, I wish you would contact every one of my former state reps, including the, um, Senator Chandler, who just retired. She was former, um, acting senate president. Worked very closely with all of these folks. In Northborough, um, we do a, a very collaborative process where we put together, we seek from all boards and committees and departments our legislative priorities. We filter it up. We work with the Board of Selectmen to identify our top key priorities. And then we invite our entire delegation into a meeting, and we walk through all of that. Afterwards, staff then follows up on each of those priorities. Uh, sometimes it might be a, a special act that needs to be done. I saw that you're looking at moving from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. We're doing the same.
Kind of halfway there.
We're doing, we're doing the same thing, that's why I'm switching between the two tonight a little bit. But we're doing the same thing i- in Northborough as well. The business community is up and down, you know, there's a tendency to focus on the, the big businesses, but I spend a great deal of time with the smaller businesses. In terms of Northborough, as I said, we have this, uh, New England Development did this large mall. We worked with them for years, both in the planning and the construction of that. Not only did the town not, uh, give incentives for that, but we actually received, uh, through negotiations with the developers, about $2.4 million in mitigation. We bought a million-dollar ladder truck, uh, with those funds and a few other things. So, a great experience working with institutions. Northborough, our, um, our, uh, tax base is very diverse. We've got medical facilities, we have St. V's in, in there, there's UMass Memorial. St. Albain has their world headquarters, uh, we have biotech, we've got a mall, lots of retail. So, we are very diverse. Overall, your total valuation in, um, Foxborough, I believe, is about 3.98. We're about 3.48, 3.5. So, for a little, for a small town, or, you know, it's funny, with, much like Foxborough, you sort of have this quaint downtown, this really New England charm, and then on some of, on the outskirts, you've got some significant, you know, economic development. And you always want to make sure that you're maintaining relationships across the board with all of those. But I've had an excellent working relationship. Uh, I'll mention one other thing in terms of, um, uh, we had a difficult situation with a solid waste violator in town. And, uh, it required me, I worked directly with then Attorney General, you know, Maury Healy. And, and worked with her directly in her office to bring prosecution against that individual. And we were successful in doing that. So, that was working with our legislative delegation, DEP, and the Attorney General's office. And as I said, every interaction that I have with any organization, my goal is to, the next time I interact with them, right out of the gate, there's a level of trust and, um, and a relationship that we can start dealing with whatever the next thing is that comes. And if you do that consistently, when something bad happens, you're not worrying, you're not trying to figure out the relationship, the relationship is solid. You can move right to trying to solve the problem and, and get things done. So, I hope I answered it. But we have a, again, up and down the chain, we've got a lot of variation in Northborough, and I believe, uh, we've worked well with all of them.
Yeah, I'll read my question. I think we've hit a lot of my questions too, but just for the people at home that know, you know, what, what our questions were, and, and of course, John, if you want to elaborate on the question, you know, feel free. Communication and collaboration between departments, as well as with boards and committees, are crucial to the success of Foxborough. How would you work to not only ensure, but also enhance communication and collaboration?
It's one thing to, to have a monthly staff meeting, you know, those are, those are important. There are certain things that need to get done. Information needs to flow from the board of, uh, the select board down through to the department heads and, and, and make sure that folks know what, uh, what the priorities are. My favorite thing to do, uh, is I love cross-functional teams. Uh, I'll give you a perfect example. As we came out of the pandemic, uh, we did an assessment of what are the needs in the community? And we found we didn't have, you know, housing needs, we didn't have people that, that were in need of food and shelter. There's always a, a segment of, of any population that has that we all, we have, but it wasn't, it wasn't, it was being met. And so, if we started to probe that, we determined that we actually, uh, the issue that people were, were feeling was, you know, a sense of isolation, and the sense of community took a beating while we were all locked up in our houses. We created a far, a cross-functional team that involves police, fire, library, social services, the senior center, the, uh, family services. We brought them together and we brainstormed, and we, and we created, uh, we call it Be Well Northborough. It's a community wellness program for the town specifically designed, and we used some ARPA funds to do this, specifically designed to sort of kick the cobwebs of the pandemic off. And I got to tell you, like, you know, staff, they did what they had to do to get through the pandemic, right? We all did. They were, those meetings were some of the, the best meetings that I've attended. They were fun, they were creative, they were thoughtful, they were excited to be doing something positive. And then when we rolled out the programs, the first thing we did was we threw an end-of-school party in our park. So, all the schools ended on one day, and we threw a big fair outside festival for them. And all departments participated, police, fire, and, um, the thing that I take away from that is, people, you go into your field of study because you like finance, or you like, um, land use planning, right? But what I find is, people like variety, and they like to feel like they're a part of something bigger. And anytime you can do, uh, cross-functional teams, even if it's an ad hoc initiative for a short thing, getting those relationships and people, one of the things they said is, look, I, I never would have interacted with the police chief, the library, I never would have, you know, interacted with the, the fire chief if it weren't for this. And when things happen like pandemics or storms, they know each other. They don't just know who they, they know each other, and there's a relationship there. So, that for me is a big piece of it. Meetings with folks, uh, communications on a regular basis, but, um, whenever we can, you know, cross-functional teams, getting people together, even around short things, uh, I think. And you'll find there are people who have amazing insights. I like to bring, I like to bring my, some administrative staff into the budget process. When the financial team's meeting, I'll select each year, we'll have new admins who aren't familiar with the town or, or, or budgeting. We'll bring them in and have them be part of that process, and we'll say, what, is there anything here that doesn't make sense to you? And if it is, we need to take a hard look at it. Because we're writing these documents and these communications for the average person, who doesn't have a background in finance or, or municipal law or land use. So, and I think people appreciate that.
All right, great. So, we're right about the time, but we're going to, we're going to keep going. But just know, just as a time check, where we're at. So, Seth, you're up.
Okay. So, John, this question's on citizen relationships and government transparency. And so, you mentioned trust a couple of times, which I think is great. And, you know, two of the things that I think create trust are, one is transparency. I'm huge into transparency personally, um, uh, and transparency is sort of telling it like it is. And another driver of trust in my mind is integrity, which I think is just as important as to do what you say you're, you know, going to do. So, transparency and integrity, um, critical. So, the question is, um, Foxborough is committed to customer service and transparency with our government and our services. So, what would you bring to this commitment to be transparent and, and integrity as well?
You know, one of the things, uh, I mentioned is, you know, you, you have to enjoy people. You have to, you have to be passionate about local government to, to do what we do. You, you have to. And one aspect of that is, uh, I love meeting with boards and committees. I love working with boards and committees, not only ones in my town, but I'll work with anybody, as you know. I'll come out and I'll, I'll work with any group. One of the things that I, that I think we do well in Northborough is, um, all the department heads, but we'll meet with, with groups. I have a standing policy where, uh, I'll go meet with any group, anytime, anywhere, to discuss anything about what's going on in Northborough. That's taken me from the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts, to the Dull Men's Club, to the Chamber of Commerce, to Rotary. And it was one of the things that I felt, um, took a hit pretty hard during the pandemic. We did it electronically, which was great, but getting out in the community and talking to people, being visible, being at the ballfields, attending events in the community, those are all things that are, that are important. In terms of your documents and your processes, you know, we've talked about having strategic plans, about having, um, good information. You know, part of transparency is not just giving people, so you, you have a budget question. Okay, well, here's my budget. You know, good luck figuring it out. It's giving people information at their level so that they can make use of it. It's not transparent to just provide information if it's not in a useful format for folks. And, and that can be not your website, it can be your, your budget documents, it could be your communication documents, but also when you speak to people. You know, you don't, not speaking over folks, but trying to get to their level to, look, I genuinely want you to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, because I believe it's the right thing to do. And I hope if you, if we're connecting, you're going to walk away feeling that, yes, I, I, I agree with that. Or, you know what, you may have something that I never thought about, and therefore, you're, you know, that piece comes into that, into that process.
John, sometimes transparency involves also telling it like it is, where it's a challenging message that you have to deliver. So, your approach when people are not necessarily going to like what you have to say?
It's being, again, being honest, you don't, you don't beat around the bush, you be straightforward. I, I say no to people all the time, it's the nature of the business. The difference is, I don't say no because this is, you know, I don't, because this is what the board told me to do. Or I say no because, um, you know, this is how we've always done it. You take the time to explain, to the best of your ability. Again, they're not always going to go away happy, but the goal of the interaction should always be that they don't go away mad or feeling, um, uh, not included into, in their community. And so, I think if, if you take that, and people know, they know when they're being told the line, they know when you're snowing over, and they know when you're being honest. You know, if you can't look somebody in the eye and say, listen, I don't have the authority to give you what, what you want. Or I don't, or we don't have the resources, or through this collaborative process that we, you know, that we've, we do for our local government, the majority didn't agree with your position. But I hope you feel like, you know, you had a seat at the table and, and people listen to you. The big thing I find people get mad is when they feel like they're isolated, they're not, they're not at least part, they're not, they don't have a seat at the table. And, and to the extent that you can, you can do that by making yourself open and accessible. And, um, and again, through the various communication platforms that you have, just communicate regularly, consistently, and honestly with folks, you know. Thanks.
All right, great. And then I have the final question before, we're going to see if you have any questions. Uh, we've talked a lot about culture, so I'll skip over, how would you approach managing culture here? I think we've talked quite a bit about that. But how do you define a successful relationship between the board and the town manager or town administrator?
Same, there's going to be a theme here all along. Integrity, trust, communication. That's the secret sauce. It just is. And, uh, in the moment you start hearing that the town administrator isn't communicating well with the board, that usually means things aren't going well. So, um, again, as a, as a manager, you want to keep the board informed. We'd never want to surprise you, the staff, uh, when it comes to things like big decisions, like budgets or large building projects, we never want to surprise the community. You want to communicate early and often and thoroughly. And if you do that, then, um, then you've got that open, uh, back and forth. You know where you stand, and the board knows, and the board knows what, what, what I'm thinking. It's individually establishing a re- relationship, each and every one of you as individuals. That's the first thing I would do, is sit down and meet with each board member. I need to know why you're on the board, what are your priorities, what is it that you want to accomplish? And then what do you want to accomplish collectively as a board? And you'll find the commonality, and when you can find the commonality in the things that everybody agrees on, and that's the, you know, that's the thing you drive at hard. But it's integrity, it's trust, and it's just constant communication, constant communication.
All right, great. So, with that, um, are there any questions left from the board? Before I turn it over to him, I want to make sure we give, give John time, if you have any questions for us. Are there any, any questions for the board?
I'm going to get my transition started early, and what I really want to know from each of you is, why did you run for the board? And what's the number one thing that you want to see happen, uh, working with the new manager? I'm looking at Seth, that's not, it's up to the chair.
Look, we're not a shy bunch, so.
Yeah, um, so I joined the board because there was, um, a need for someone to come in and contribute, um, at this level. So, I had experience, um, personally with my, you know, my, my work, and then also, um, on the finance, um, our advisory committee. And so, with that background, I thought I could contribute and, and help, um, drive, you know, solid policy based on where the town was looking to go. And so, you know, what, what I would say is, Foxborough is in good shape generally in terms of our finances, our, um, we have a good, really solid base, we have a really strong team, management team. And I said that to Bernie, right, you know, and he's like, you said this a couple of times. I'm like, yes, this is a good team. So, one, first, do no harm, right? Like, let's make sure, and then, and then think about some of the things that, um, are challenges or opportunities. I guess they're sort of one and the same sometimes. And how do we move forward and take advantage of, of some of those opportunities that, that presented, that are presented to the town? And, um, so just broadly speaking, that's, that's, those are my thoughts.
And so, like Seth, I sat on our advisory committee for three years before I ran. And, um, if for some reason you end up being our town manager, I think you and I are going to spend a lot of time together, because I am, the, the financing and the spending is what drives me. So, I didn't grow up in Foxborough, but I've been here for twenty-four years. My, my husband grew up here, so raised our children here. So, um, and I like great things, I want us to have good services, but I also worry about overspending. So, that's kind of what, you know, led me here to, um, help be a part in, and even a little bit of, we had some disconnect with boards here, you know, um, as we were on advisory committee before, you know, our advisory committee went into town meeting recommending almost $400,000 in cuts, and our Board of Selectmen didn't recommend a penny. You know, it was, that's a big difference. And it was probably, we should have been somewhere in the middle, you know, it wasn't that advisory committee was right or whatever. And I just, um, it, it piqued my interest on how it works, and I, I feel like each year with a new budget, I learn a little bit more, so it's, um, that's kind of what drove me here. And I, I feel like, um, it's nice to be part of your community, and, and I, I feel like people may not always agree with how I think or what I say, but if you at least come to the table and you're willing to, to learn and speak up for the community. So, that's kind of what brought me here, and I, and I'm enjoying it a lot.
All right, so much like you say you're a budget nerd, I am like a local government community nerd. So, uh, I grew up here, you know, not many, like, young thirty-year-olds are following, you know, watching town meetings, and I still do in other towns. But, you know, I just, I, I love this stuff, and I really deeply care about this community. So, while all the budget stuff is really important, like you talked about the projects that get things done, that move things, we are in a really good place, I like what you said, Seth, about do no harm. Like, we are a great town, we have a great culture, we have great department heads. So, um, how we can take what we have and, and just move it forward, there's always a little bit improvement to do. But that's, you know, some of my, my biggest things that I'd like to see. I kind of am passionate for this, we call it our uptown area. So, you know, although we have Route One in the stadium, you know, we're, we're doing so much work, and it looks like we maybe haven't done so much yet, there's a lot more to come. But, you know, we've made some great strides and, and just bringing it all together.
Great.
So, again, I'm a newcomer, I'm a newcomer to Foxborough, I've been here-
So again, I'm a newcomer, I'm a newcomer to Foxborough, I've been here about six, seven years, and I came from a healthcare background, and I just factually, I, I ran two large healthcare organizations, both billion-dollar corporations, I was the commissioner of public health for the CDA Cambridge. I had a wonderful career, you know, challenging, exciting career, but I never had time to really give back to my community. So this is the first time I've really been able to give back to the community. I was on the advisory board for three years, what better place than a board of selectmen to really give back to the community? Something that Bernie said to me is another reason here, Foxborough is a real gem, and in the, this is a unique town, it's a unique board of selectmen, and the position is really unique. When it comes to external relationships, you know, when it comes to Patriot Place, you're dealing with Bob Kraft and Jonathan Kraft and all of his leadership, those are external relationships. When you're dealing with Mass General Brigham, who have a huge, probably biggest in Massachusetts, a huge health center right at Patriot Place, and now the Dana Faber's there as well, those are also relationships you're gonna have to develop and work with, because they're both part of Foxborough, they're both on Foxborough land, and there's myriad relationships involved when it comes to those two organizations alone. Uniquely, I don't think there's another town in the state that has that uniqueness. So that excites me too, being on this board and being able to deal with these.
It's just one of the things that makes it such an attractive position as a, as a professional manager.
How you doing?
Okay.
I've got a totally unique way I got on the board, and back seven years ago, it was all getting over a sort of little fractured relationship with the Crafts, and I was asked to run for the board, to try to get that relationship back on track, and I had no experience whatsoever. I've been a volunteer in this community since I first started here 33 years ago as a small business person, but I was doggedly chased for...
Are you looking at me?
For months to run on the board, and finally acquiesced, and probably one of the greatest, yeah, it was Steph that kept hounding me to, to run, and, and against a person on the board at the time who was very anti, you know, what was going on up there, and, you guys haven't gotten rid of me since my third term, I love being a part of giving back to the community, I tend to think we've got just a good common sense sort of look at, at things. You know, my personal budget is, you know, nowhere near, nor have I ever dealt with a budget that I've been dealing with, but I've learned a ton over the last seven years, and, and I'm glad I was part of the process of, 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 a small process of hire, of, of having the strong directors that we have in this community, from our fire chief, police chief, our senior center, our planning board, you know, we've got a phenomenal, even, even part of the process of hiring our, our new DPW director, and I think that crowning achievement maybe to that, being a part of that over the last seven years is maybe a new town, you know, being a part of hiring a new town manager too, so that's where, where I am.
So through, through everything that I hear, it's, I mean, it's a consistency of, you know, people wanna have a positive impact on their community, and they want people to, again, feel trusted, feel heard, and they wanna make progress, budgeting, building projects, relationships. If you look at the track record of my community, I've been there 14 years, we've had 14 consecutive budgets with unanimous support for every budget and every capital project from every single board and committee member. Now, anybody can fool somebody once, maybe twice, but the consistency of, of what we've been able to achieve as a community in Northborough, those relationships, the expertise of, of the building and the budgeting, those are the things I hope to bring to your community, and, and again, the uniqueness of your community. As a manager, you know, I have, we could go anywhere, we wanna go someplace that, you know, is gonna be exciting, there's a lot to do, a lot to learn, those are the things that, that I'm seeking for here. And, and based on what I've heard from, from the board, I think that my personality, my expertise, my background, and my desire to serve, my passion for local government, would make me a pretty good match for what you folks are looking for, and I hope, I hope, I hope that I am the selected individual.
I wanna add one more thing if I could, John, and, and that's over my past seven years I've been here, we've had a phenomenal board. We've not always agreed with each other on things, but we've all respected each other as the people go on and come off over the last seven years. And I think, I think that's a, I don't know what that's attributed to, just respecting each, all our opinions, but in other communities, when I hear, you know, board of selectmen, select board members, you know, get up and yell at each other, and scream at each other, and, and are fractured, in my seven years, we've never had that.
And our relationships with the town manager too, I think would add, and our department heads are really strong, like, let them fly, you know?
Have you heard that? You know, you're, we're all looking at each other, and I, I can tell you, I've probably watched over 40 hours of your meetings. After a meeting with you, I felt like it was a, you, you have a good board, you've got a good dynamic on your board, but watching your community and getting to know your community, that's where I started to feel like there was a, there was a connection and there was a, a match, a match here. And you're looking for a, a fit, I'm looking for a fit, and everything that I've seen, and everything I've heard, and the experience right through to this evening, makes me feel like this is a match for me, and I hope at the end of this process, you feel like it might, it's a match for you as well, so.
All right, great. All right, great, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Do we wanna take a two-second break?
With pleasure.
Board, need a, need a bathroom break, or are we good? Keep going. We're good? Okay, we're good, okay. All right, we're gonna keep rolling then after this.
I mean, of course I wrote a ribbon bow, but just in case we wanna relook at anything. John gave it to us. You have to go and keep, yeah, we're generous.
Did you bring any?
I got some stale coffee.
I thought I had a big supper. Without dessert.
We'll see if any candidates bring dessert.
I got candy in the, yeah.
I'm good.
I know, if I knew we were gonna have it, I didn't, I might've bought some chocolates or something like that.
Right, maybe. I fungus in my purse one day, like, like a couple days after, I was like, oh, yes! I didn't share them with the kids. Jeff, are you gonna hold your article? I would love it if you did, but, no, we can't.
He's not committal about that.
Yes, okay.
Point noted.
These references are really, really good.
Mm, all of them.
Cross the board, dude. Yeah, the guy leave.
Keep the boat moving, don't rock it too much.
Stay in your lane. There you go.
It's so funny, Dark, because I was like, at the very end, so of course, it's like me and Seth were first, and we listened to you guys at the end, I was almost gonna say almost exactly what you said. Like, it's, you know, nobody leaves mad, we're friends, we're community people, you know?
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Hi, Seth Ferguson, nice to meet you.
Hi, Ted, Steph McGowan, nice to meet you.
Leah Gibson, nice to meet you.
Dennis Keefe. Nice to meet you.
You don't shake my hand.
I came back for him. He's still my assistant health director. Whoa, all right. But it's good enough for him, it's good enough for me.
All right, great, so I'm gonna read a brief statement, and it's the same statement I'm reading, just kinda housekeeping rules for everyone at the start of the interviews, so. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 10th special select board meeting. Tonight's purpose is to interview the finalists, recommended by the selection committee. We are, we are interviewing in alphabetical order for this, if Bernie hadn't already told you that. You see, we met with a candidate earlier, and then we have two more on Thursday as well. So, thank you to Bernie and the screening committee for helping us get from 30 down to the four that we're meeting with this week. Cable access is here and is recording the meeting, but it will not be released until after the interviews are complete. And I don't think anyone new that walked in is here for regular business. So, I'd like to thank you for your time this evening and interest in joining Foxborough, we'd like to think we're a special community, and are passionate about making sure we find the right replacement for Bill Keegan, who, who will be retiring in the next few months. So, we're excited to have you here, we're eager to hear more from you, we've, we've scheduled approximately one hour for your interview, you can see we've unfortunately already gone a little bit over, so thank you for your patience there. The board will go around and ask you scenario-based questions, and Bernie's going to help keep us on track time-wise, so you can blame him for us being late, sorry.
Sorry.
Specific examples and scenarios from your past are encouraged in your answers, and public participation and questions from the audience is not permitted during the process. So everyone has reviewed your resume and your references, quotes from your references in advance of tonight's meeting, and due to time constraints, we'll go and just have everyone give kind of a 30-second quick background from the board, and then if Bernie has anything to add, and then we'll turn it over to you to see if you have any questions, and then go into the interview.
Perfect.
All right, great. We tend to just go straight down the line and everything.
Mark Elfman, been on the board, it's my third term, my seventh, beginning of my seventh year, been a resident in Foxborough for 33 years, got a small business in town, and that's it.
Dennis Keefe, this is my first year on the board, I've been in Foxborough six or seven years, I was on the advisory committee for three years, and my background before here, before coming to Foxborough even, was healthcare for most of my career.
All right, great, Leah Gibson, this is my fifth year, I think, second term, I did grow up in town, so I'm really committed to the community. For the last 20 years, I've worked for an HR consulting firm in a very, various roles, you know, with benefits, pensions, and most recently in, in global broking and sales operations, so I focus a lot on process and procedure and things like that.
Hey, Steph McGowan, I am just finishing my first term, three years on the board. I didn't grow up in town, but I've been here, my husband is a townie, so I've been here for 24 years, and joined the board just to try to make a difference in the community.
Seth Ferguson, I've been on the select board for, this is my second year, I have, was also on their advisory committee, along with Dennis and Stephanie, so that's our, our financial committee, and have a financial services background as well, so, yeah, nice to meet you. You too.
And we are in the process of going from board of selectmen to select board, we're kind of right in the middle.
Saw that.
Waiting for town meetings, so if you hear us...
What did I say? I never remember.
I don't know, we flip back and forth if you hear us do that, so. All right, great, so any questions for us, housekeeping-wise, before we get started on the interview questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, great. So, again, thank you for your interest in Foxborough, please just take a couple minutes to tell us why you're interested in the position and why you believe you'll be successful here.
I'd start with, and first, I just, I wanna thank the screening committee for a great process in getting me to this point, so far it has been a very good process, a lot of good questions there too, and I'm sure we'll have more tonight. And just so you know, like I told them, this, this is the only job that I've applied for, this is the only one I've submitted a resume for, I wasn't, I still am not searching, someone happened to send me, 'cause when they read it, and they read the, the statement of position, they thought of me, and then when I got it and read it, I, I thought you wrote it for me. Nicely done. Yeah, so, so, it, and I, I could tell quickly, after a little research, it took me a little while, I think I actually submitted my resume the, the last possible day, and that was for a reason, I did a little, you know, research, wanna make sure it's the right fit, I'm not going somewhere just for the sake of it, I wanna go somewhere where I can continue the success that I've had in Weymouth and, and other places with, with a new opportunity, I'm, I'm just always looking for that opportunity, and, and I agree, it, it seems like a very special place, and there's a lot of things that are before you or in your future that I've had experience and success with in other places, and it just seemed like a, a really good fit, and that's why I submitted my resume to, to do that. And again, I've, you know, I, I go back to, you know, right now, a lot, the most recent seven years have been in Weymouth, managing the day-to-day operations of that town, we still call it a town, even though it's a city, former government. Well, before that, I was at the State House, but in addition, learned a lot in the town of Braintree where I lived at the time, and actually was on the Braintree Advisory Committee, we call it the FinCom there, but it was the full advisory committee, served as chair there for four years, went before town meeting, and had a lot of good experience there that developed into, you know, the career that I, you know, still have now. So I'm very excited about the opportunity, again, I don't pick them lightly, and, and this seems like a really good fit and a really good community, and I'm excited about the opportunity.
All right, great.
You're out of water.
Yeah.
Well, your little packet I had.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, no worries. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Technical difficulty.
You can't kick 'em under the tail from here.
My question wasn't in my packet. How do you go about setting long-term goals for yourself and the organization, and how do you use data in the management of your organization?
When, when I, you know, first took the job, and like others, it's, it's, you know, everyone wants things to happen then, and, and my big philosophy is that I can't do it all, you know, at once, so it does take, you know, that strategic, long-term plan ahead to, to do that, and, and it's, you know, you see what's available for resources, you know, now, what do you project for resources in the coming days, for me, it's also obviously listening to the stakeholders, and in my case, the mayor, and the town counselors, to see what the priorities are, you know, we know what the needs are, for the most part, everyone does, whether they're differing or not, what, you know, I know what collectively the needs are. And then, so you just create that realistic, you know, plan of what can I do short-term with the resources we have, what, what can, what can wait and push off, and what's, you know, not really feasible, but hey, maybe something will change and come up with it. So I take that strategy toward it, just again, based on, I'm a very direct and pragmatic manager, so it's, it's really based on the facts before me, and how we can lay those out, and, and some things come up that are more of an emergency than others, and we, we take care of that, with, again, with the, the resources, we find the resources, and we've been able to do that in Weymouth, and we were, I did that also, you know, through the FinCom and Braintree as, as those things came up, but, you know, I keep telling people, you know, that, that's nice, I just, I can't do it all, you know, today or this year, but as long as you explain to them, you know, a path to getting there, you know, saying, you know, 'cause you get, you get, you know, resources on an annual basis, and if, you know, planning it out, and, you know, depending on escalation costs and all that, but, you know, for the most part, when you look at, you know, I think what hopefully stands out in the last 70 years is the results in Weymouth and the things that we've accomplished, and it, it didn't all happen overnight, it happened purposely through those seven years. One thing I, I'd like to point to is the fact that we opened up a fire station that had been closed for 13 years, I believe it closed in that, you know, the 2008 recession. So when we came in, that had been a priority for the mayor and a lot of people, and I'm like, okay, that, I, I can't get there, but I, you know, annually added, you know, and used a safer grant to add firefighters on an annual basis, a couple at a time, over okay, I can't get there, but I, you know, annually added, you know, and used a safer grant to add firefighters on an annual basis, a couple at a time, over time. And then, about five or six years later, had enough where I had, you know, we went from a seventeen-man thing to a twenty-one. I got to a group number of twenty-four, twenty-five, so I knew had some cushion, you know, people were out. And I said, okay, now we can open up that station in a responsible way. We are having a little overtime issue right now, but that's a little separate. But, that's how it was. So, that was a goal from day one. But I'm like, but that can't happen right now, 'cause we don't have enough firefighters. I can't hire, you know, ten firefighters in one year, it's just, it's too expensive. But we did it incrementally. I did it, you know, with that plan, and then we opened up, you know, the station which has, you know, reduced response times in much of the town.
As a follow-up, do you have specific experience in creating or implementing a strategic plan for the community?
I mean, that is, I mean, I have, yeah, internally, I guess, it's, you know, I have what I call my master spreadsheet. I have one for the budget, which has tracked budgets all along, but I do have one for projects, you know, that has, as the projects come up and the needs come up, go on that spreadsheet. And then I have the funding sources and the years, when those funding sources, whether it's, you know, our free cash on an annual basis, that would go to those types of one kind. Our recurring revenue, we've done very well in our new growth in towns, so we've been able to have that as a revenue source. And so, yeah, as the projects come up, they get on the list, and then I have marked out, have them marked out for when, you know, we might be able to get to them. And again, things change, you know, we're, right now, had a plan, a long-time plan. So, Weymouth, just the other part that connects, it seems like a lot, and it is a much bigger town than Foxborough, but we don't have a town center, we don't have a downtown. We actually have at least four different villages, smaller villages. So, we look at it that way, plus we have the big development in Southfield or Union Point, which could be considered the, you know, the fifth big development. So, when we look at those, you know, kind of things, we focus on the villages as well. And, you know, those projects, you know, by village, and then, you know, map it out that way as well, and what needs to be part of that plan as far as, you know, we've done a lot of redevelopment over the last, in a responsible manner, trying to, you know, and again, I call it redevelopment because it's, you know, buildings and places that, you know, didn't look great before and had just, you know, been there, unkempt blight of sorts for many years that we're trying to, you know, redevelop. And that's a big part of that strategic plan too. And so, we created overlays and things like that with looking ahead to, again, not all at once, but over time doing it. Actually became almost too popular with developers, and so we kinda tapped the brakes on it a little bit, pulled back, changed the density and a couple other things for that, for that planning. But overall, you know, did those things as the foundation of the future, you know, plan.
Thank you.
Just quick, Ted, how many people live approximately in Weymouth? Is it like?
It's almost sixty thousand, it's fifty-six, fifty-eight, yeah. Yeah, it is.
Okay.
So, do you have an actual strategic planning process, or is it more, as things come up, you?
Yeah, it's internal with, you know, the mayor's office, so me and, you know, with me and the mayor. I mean, obviously, our planning department too, with those sorts of things. But, you know, we obviously, there's public safety components to it, one of them obviously, you know, being the opening of, so it starts with the goals of the various, you know, departments and stakeholders, and, you know, and developed within the mayor's office, you know, with, you know, the cooperation of those various stakeholders along the way.
Great, thank you.
You're up next.
Okay. Ed, describe your leadership style and give examples of your approach to working with a team and leading change in an organization and a community.
And it's Ted, you can call me, so I go by Ted.
Oh, okay.
That was fine.
I thought I missed Red.
I've been called worse.
In the club.
I would, you know, sum it up by, you know, direct and pragmatic. I don't like to dance around too much around ideas or with interactions with my department heads or boards and committees, and it's not in a, at all in a disrespectful way. I just, you know, like to cut to the point and deal with things in a very direct, but thoughtful, pragmatic way. I'm an over thinker, if anything. You know, I'll wake up, you know, in the middle of the night, having just met about something that day, and just, all of a sudden, they will just come to me like, hey, let's, like, maybe try this tomorrow, so I'll write it down and, you know, bring it up tomorrow. But it's a, it's a direct, respectful approach to my management. And again, that's, you know, across the board, so they, I think it's, it means something that when you say something, you mean it, and you're gonna follow through on it, and you're not gonna give someone false hope, but you're gonna explain it. You know, I can, everything that I've done, I can defend, and I know I've done it for the right reasons, and I have, you know, the research and thought behind it where I can defend it. You may not agree with it, not everyone does, obviously, but I'm very comfortable explaining where I'm coming from and the decisions, you know, I've made, and that's from, you know, to the mayor down. So, you know where you're getting when you meet with me, and we're not gonna, you know, spend too much time, if you will, going around in circles about it.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Ted, so, we're gonna move to financial management. So, first of all, Braintree and Weymouth, South Shore, big fan. My dad's a Quincy guy, so I like it, like it over there. Anyway, so, we had asked the question earlier of the first candidate about the town, the bond rating of the town. It has some weight and significance, but it's not the N L B also. I just thought I'd ask right off the bat about your debt. Yeah, we have the double A. We do have the lowest bond rating for the short-term borrowing, which we do utilize and have did utilize when, especially when interest rates were really low, and, you know, that rate was, you know, under one percent that we could get. And it's, actually, that was on financial planning and fiscal, the short-term borrowing was, I think, one of the bigger impacts on the reason we've accomplished so much over the last seven years with what we built. We built a new thirty-three million dollar library within the tax levy. We built a hundred and sixty-three million dollar school, ten million of it within the tax levy, five, fifty-seven million in a state grant, and the rest of it was the town's first ever override. And I think that was a direct reflection on the mayor's and I fiscal record over the first few years. We spent between ten and fifteen million dollars upgrading our fields and playgrounds. And we were able to do that and save a lot of money. You know, I love the fact that you guys are triple A. I hope you're taking, you know, advantage of it, you know, 'cause, you know, why earn it if you're not going to, but still protect it at the same time. But with, you know, double A, I'm personally, every time we go out to bond money, I am on that phone call, I'm on that bond rating phone call, selling our town about the financial policies that we've implemented, the new policies we've implemented, how we spend our money. We've increased our stabilization funds since I've been there, from a one-point-one million dollars, which was insane, to almost nine million dollars now, while doing everything else. And, you know, sustaining a modest growth in our budget, having free cash that averages over seven million dollars every year. So, we've been able to do all of that in seven years, in addition to the parks and playgrounds. We built turf soccer fields, a complex, built a new turf baseball field that is home to a college in Boston. And then, all of our other playgrounds and stuff, we've upgraded as well along the way. In addition, we've spent over thirty million dollars, including our chapter ninety, which is one-point-one for us annually, on what we call a pave-the-way program. And we've fixed almost two-hundred segments of roads throughout town in those same seven years. We've been able to do all of that, mostly based, again, not triple A, but double A in the short-term interest rate, which is the highest rating out there. And we've taken advantage of that, especially when the interest rates were so low, you know, under three percent, that we were getting close to two, some even, you know, under two at one point. So, we have taken advantage of that. And we do, every time I get that report from our bonding agency, and it has something in it, it calls something adequate, and I get very annoyed by the word, by the word adequate. And I talk to my finance team, and I'm like, and I ask our bond people, I'm like, what can we do to change that? And we've been slowly moving, you know, toward that. So, there's other factors that, you know, weigh in, but every time we go out, you know, I ask what we can do to improve that.
So, that burned up sort of my question time. I think I got after.
You have a very important question, though, so. That's probably the question we spend the most time on, I would say.
Yeah, so, the, so, we are interested in your experience with municipal finance, finance and budget preparation. I'm comfortable with the question because I know you developed and presented seven town budgets. So, how do you work with your finance team to integrate the strategic planning that you talked about into budget development?
And that's the seven budgets in the last seven years in Weymouth. I also did it as chair of the FinCom in Braintree. They just had a structure that, even though it's a crazy structure, that's why they, my last year as chair of FinCom was when they changed to a mayor-form of government. So, I was their last FinCom chair for the last four years. But I would, as FinCom chair there, send out budget instructions to departments for those last four years. And as a member of the finance committee, would still work toward developing those to send out to the committees, and we would present our budget recommendations to town meeting also in Braintree. So, it's seven years plus many more on the town meeting form in Braintree. But it starts with forecasting, with my, you know, finance team early on. You know, it's, there's no trick to it. You know, you have your tax levy, you have your local receipts, and you have your state aid. You know, state aid, we, you know, we have a big chunk of it. We have forty million dollars of state aid, but it doesn't, it doesn't grow.
Yeah.
It barely grows. Most years, the revenue aside, it grows by less than one percent for us. We're a minimum aid community, so we get that thirty, or in the last couple years, it'll be sixty dollars a student for chapter seventy. So, I know that is pretty much gonna be every year, so it's that. Our tax levy, you know, we'll do some forecasting every, it's actually my, usually my Valentine's gift from my assessor is a new growth, is a new growth estimate, 'cause that's huge, 'cause that's really where, for the last seven years, thirty percent of our new revenue growth has come from new growth, tax levy new growth. Like I said before, we've averaged almost two million dollars over the seven years because of the redevelopment efforts we've made. So, I push her for, and I ask for a range. I know they're not gonna have it. And then I ask for a range, and then I'll, you know, we usually pick somewhere in the middle, you know, depending on maybe a couple other factors. And again, this is all with, you know, my finance team, including the assessors and my finance director and treasurer. Then we'll look at, you know, the revenues that we've collected in the last few years and see if we're able to sustain those. When I first came in, actually, we came in, I was just talking about this on the hallway, 'cause they knew the last CFO before the mayor, but he had left, and so we actually came into office without a CFO. So, I served in that role. And it's a little different as a chief of staff, that I do author the budget, you know, and it's not, you know, our finance director or CFO. I do it directly. That's the reason, I actually, when I worked for him up at the State House as his chief of staff as well, I actually left him for a little while to try again some other opportunities. He actually asked me back when he thought about running for mayor, because he knew of the experience I had in Braintree and with budgets. And he'll, you know, selfishly, you know, selfishly admit that he is awful with numbers, so he brought me back for that reason. And so, when we first got there, there was no CFO, and so we, you know, had to kinda start from scratch as far as budgets were. Obviously, there were staff that could help in that. But, you know, so we develop those projections first, then I'll send out budget instructions based on those projections. And I'll be conservative, you know, to start with and hope for the best. But, and then I'll, you know, we'll get back, you know, the proposals, and then sit down, department by department, and with the schools to review their budget within those instructions. And then I'll ask for separately, if you could do something beyond these instructions, what would it be in priority? And so, they'll do that. And then, you know, over time, and we're a little different timeframe, is I have to present the budget mid-March. So, I do have the luxury of doing that. I usually get at least the house numbers at the state level before I submit it, just to see if there's anything crazy that happens. And even if it does, sometimes I leave it the same and let it play out. But, so that's our kinda process. It starts, you know, early, you know, the year before, but it's, you know, ongoing. And the other part of my budget process, when I'm doing it, and then the Weymouth level, is I've, I actually go in, we use Munis as well, and I review every single line item in the budget before I submit it. Munis gives you a history of actual expenses that have been used. And so, I always like, I'm very clear to my department heads, you know, 'cause early on, it's like, oh, we had this last year, so it's gonna be at least that or more. I'm like, no, budgeting isn't just addition, you know, there's some subtraction to it. And the best year, we did that. So, I would go through it, I would, to be a realistic budget. Like, if this is what we spent, say, the last three or five years, and it's twenty thousand dollars less than you're budgeted, then we're gonna reduce that line item, 'cause you haven't needed it then. They'll be like, oh, but you never know. Well, okay, you're right, I don't know, but we have other ways to deal with that. We have a reserve fund. We have stabilization, worst-case scenario, but, you know, we have other ways to, you know, deal with the unexpected. And so, the best year I had in doing that, and I forget when the big ones, I think might have been fuel, when fuel was a little cheaper, but they had still had it at the higher levels. There was, you know, a couple hundred thousand that I actually reduced that and some others. But overall, in addition to all the new revenue that was collected, I saved a million dollars. And we have about between five and seven million dollars in new revenue every year, on average, give or take. And so, I had a million in addition to that, just from, you know, reducing line items and moving it someplace else. So, we were able to, you know, take care of the needs that we had, instead of funding things that we didn't need. So, that's, you know, more than probably wanted to know, but that's, this is, the most, my favorite part of the job is easily finances and the budget and bonding and just figuring it all out so we can, we, and again, this is, when you look at what we've done the last seven years, it's all about funding, it's all about revenue. And we haven't lost a, my, my big mantra, when I do a budget or anything else that we're spending money on, is sustainability. I am unlikely to do anything that I am not almost a hundred percent confident that I can sustain long-term. Again, you know, even during the pandemic, we were able to sustain everything we had built up, you know, and again, 'cause different factors, like, okay, something could go wrong, but I'm gonna have other options to be able to keep that. But I don't do anything that I don't feel I can sustain long-term. I'm not a big fan of, you know, yeah, we can afford it now, but then have to lay it off or cut it two years from now. I, that is a pet peeve of mine, and something that, you know, I get into, you know, direct discussions with unions and other, other things about, hey, we have, like, opera money, we have twenty-nine million dollars of opera money in Weymouth. I'm not spending it on your operating expenses. I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I'll spend it on a lot of other things, but they want us to spend it, you know, a lot of people, and I get it, but, you know, and that's the conversations I can have with them, the direct respectful stuff. I don't, I don't take anything personally in those discussions. You know, you can ask for anything you want, I don't mind that. You're doing your job, and then I'm gonna do mine by saying no, or finding a way to fund it. So, that's, that's how I approach finance in general, and especially, you know, budgeting. And again, it's been seven in a row where they've passed unanimously eleven-nothing or ten-nothing on the, on the town council, and we've been able to sustain. And we've been able to sustain everything we have, plus get a good amount of free cash every year, which is a budgeting, you know, result, if you will. And even the one year, our COVID year, our revenues came in $1.2 million under budgeted. So our revenues were below budget, but we still ended up with over $3 million in free cash because I started reviewing every expenditure in town over $1,000 myself. And I still do it, actually. I haven't given that up yet, even though I started in COVID, I still get the spreadsheet with every expense over $1,000. And we were able to be almost $5 million under budget on expenses that year and ended up with $3 million in free cash and did not lose a single permanent position or service.
Thanks.
Ted, what's your philosophy on using free cash for operating budget?
When we came into office, and again, I'm not, you know, the previous administration would purposely under budget some revenue. So they would have additional free cash that they would then use to give to the schools maybe like mid-year, which didn't make any sense. You know, schools obviously need to know how much money they have a lot earlier than that. So there was some effort to use, we immediately, very first year, created, you know, the policy that we're not going to use free cash or any one-time source for the operating budget. So almost all of our free cash or any other one-time funding, we got a host community agreement, you know, like $10 million would be the same kind of thing for the compressor station that was built. And we only use it for capital. The only time I would consider, I don't think I have yet, using it for something in the operating budget would say, and even though we've done all this borrowing and bonding over time, I've done it in a way that I only have one year on my entire bond schedule that actually increases significantly. We've, I've scheduled it in a way that we don't have a budget impact to it. It's pretty, our debt service number now is the same as it was eight years ago. And that's, that's done purposely. So we fill in the gaps. The only time I might consider using free cash toward the operating budget is if it was a tough year and I had like a little spike in my debt service that I knew was going down the very next year. I knew it wasn't going to be there. And say it's a half million dollars that, you know, when you're talking five or $6 million in new revenue, that's a lot of money. I might use it in that kind of situation. So it's, it's, the success, I think, comes from that level of creativity. There's, you know, I want every best practice we have. I want, you know, to know, you know, those best practices, what the best things. But I think the biggest success comes from being creative like that and thinking outside the box. And it's not always what's in, you know, a policy or textbook or something like that, but not doing anything like, you know, crazy. So something like, you know, free cash, yes, we have this very strict policy. But guess what? There could be a creative way that I could use it and not negatively impact our finances. And that would be, you know, one example that comes to mind for us. But otherwise, it funds our capital.
Just a little clarification. So when you said, so basically you would tell your departments to bring, bring forward what their wants and needs are for, so somebody used the term one time when I was on AdCom, backing into the budget. So in other words, what you said, like, so if, you know, if library budget was $3 million last year, so that's, they're not guaranteed $3 million this year. I mean, I know salaries are going to drive, drive budget, obviously, you're going to have those increases. But basically, it's not just, okay, you're getting that exact same money next year. You're going to submit and then you're, like you said, you're going to go over line by line and then you're going to make
Yeah.
Sometimes hard decisions.
It is. It can be. But for the most part, it's, it's, you know, what is it, what will it cost next year to provide the same level of service that you provide this year? That's kind of like a baseline of sorts that we often use. And that would be, you know, any collective bargaining, you know, increases. I decide on an annual basis what the non-union salary increase will be. And then, you know, the other factors. But it's usually, you know, what does it cost next year for the same level of service that we're providing this year? But then I'm going to go through and examine each one of those line items to see if the budget level that we have is actually what we're spending. And if it's not, then I'm going to reduce it. There are a couple of occasions where I'm looking at it and I've, I've waited a couple of years to increase it to see if it keeps, you know, going at that level. And then, you know, or I'll incrementally increase it, knowing I'm not fully funding it. But maybe starting that way to see what the third year trend might be and then address it, you know, that following year.
So you must have really good data to be able to annualize a spend?
Yeah.
When you sit down with people and really project what's really going to be their need as opposed to the just in case money?
Yes.
I always like that, just in case.
No, like I, like I said, when I make that decision, I'm going to have the backup to tell everyone, including, you know, starting from the department head to the town council, to the public. You know, we still have a town meeting, one town meeting every year where the public can come in and we present the budget and other projects and they can ask questions. So I'm always going to have that, where that number came from and that, that history and that background of how I came up with that, that number.
All right, I think we're good to move on, Ted?
All right. Okay, Ed, Ed, now I'm saying Ted. I said Ted four times before this. Now all of a sudden I'm saying it. Ted, the town has a number of projects in the pipeline. The Taylor School, which is one of our elementary schools, is due for renovation, a potential new community center and a DPW facility. Please tell us about your direct experience with managing capital improvement projects or other major municipal projects and initiatives.
And I touched on it briefly, the two biggest ones in the last seven years was a new library. We had a library that was built in the 50s, I believe, maybe early 60s, very outdated. I remember this story, when we first got there, there were some HVAC issues and I can't even describe what the fix was, but it looked like an octopus, like there was something outside and these giant tubes going into windows from the, and it literally looked like an octopus. And being the mayor, we're like, what would it take to fix that? And it was, it was some crazy number. And then, so that's when, you know, we started looking to, you know, how about we replace it? We applied for a grant with the state, which we got. This is one of our first decisions, too. They kind of already, it was kind of already planned on the thing, but no way, they didn't have a way to fund it. We were successful in getting a $12 million grant for the $33 million library. Like I said, I found a way, it was assumed when I got there that they couldn't afford it. That was just like, kind of like, we can't afford that where, you know. And I'm like, I looked at the bond schedule and I'm like, I think we can. And we did. And I was part of that construction committee. And as Chief of Staff, not only on the direct construction, but as Chief of Staff, was the oversight as well. So that $33 million. And it opened up during COVID in 2020. So we kind of finished that project as COVID was starting. That project as well came in on time, on budget with a significant contingency leftover. We actually used that contingency to put solar on the roof of the new library. We equipped it so we would be able to. We did that also with the middle school. We equipped it so if we had the money, we could add solar. So I was directly responsible and oversight of that project. My baby, if you will, the last seven years, and again, this, this was started right from the scratch because it was already a statement of interest with the state for a new middle school. We had, Waymouth had a weird transition where we had two middle schools. We had elementary schools and we had a fifth and sixth middle school and a seventh and eighth middle school and then high school. So we had a plan to eliminate one of those transitions, create a six through eight middle school, send fifth grade back to the elementary schools, which included some permanent modular expenses that we factored in. But pursued that. MSBA came to the mayor and I and said, is this something you're serious about? Because it was new administration. So then I'm like, sure. So we looked again at the finances. We knew it would most likely need a debt exclusion. I, in the back of my mind, didn't tell people that because I wanted it to pass, but I probably could have figured it out like without it. We wouldn't have been able to do everything else that we did after that with the parks and the roads and everything like that. But we might have been able to do it. But we thought, you know, that expense needed some, you know, buy-in from, from the public. So again, we applied for the grant, got 57 million in reimbursement grant from, from the state. That actually was, was a good experience because I had a lot of contacts from my time at the State House and dealing with the agencies on behalf of the eight communities that we represented at the State House. I was the municipal liaison for the, for the state senator at the time. And so, you know, was able to have those nice, you know, connections and conversations with MSBA to kind of get a sense of what was real or expected and what, what we had to look forward to. But pursued that process, got the grant. I became the mayor appointed me Chair of that building committee, plus also I was the owner representative. I'm the one that signs all the, still do all the change orders. But that project, in the peak of COVID and the pandemic, also finished on time, $163 million, 252,000 square feet, 1,470 kids. We believe it's the second biggest middle school in the state, finished on time, on budget, with almost $6 million left in contingency that we're still looking to see how we're going to spend that. So those were my big two projects. But in addition to that, the town before we had gotten there bought an estate, the Emery Estate. It's a replica of actually Mountain Vernon. But then just kind of sat there after that, they bought it with CPA money and a ton of land with it. So afterwards, we got a park grant, kind of divided it up a little bit, kind of keep the house separate and built a passive park up there that we oversaw too, with a walking trail pavilion and some restrooms. We're working on historically preserving the house as well, which is over 100 years old. In addition to that, all the new fields that we built, I would directly, you know, oversee that with our, you know, obviously our consultants and construction folks. And depending on the project, those, you know, department heads. But we've done a lot of capital improvements in Waymouth over the last seven years that I've been directly overseeing. The two most directly would be the new library and the new school.
All right, great.
Great, Ted. So like Waymouth, we're a public entity. We're heavily unionized. So we're interested in your experience in collective bargaining. What has been your role in labor negotiations? Specifically, have you been directly at the table? And using an example, describe your approach in managing in a unionized environment. Maybe talk about your experience with grievances.
Yeah, I, the lead negotiator in all union matters for the town. We have, I think it's seven unions now. We had eight. We had the traffic supervisors that, one of the things I did that was under the police department. We actually moved that with a little pushback from some folks. We actually moved it from the police department to the school department during our tenure. So otherwise, I believe there's seven unions that, again, on a collective bargaining annual, you know, negotiations that I'm the lead with, but also all the grievances and unfair labor practices that have, have come up. You know, it's me, I'm the lead, but with our solicitor, we, one thing the mayor did when he came in, we had an outside legal firm. The mayor brought in an in-house solicitor that saved us actually a lot of money, but worked, you know, directly with us. That was, I think, a better situation because he was, you know, at town hall every day, all day. Since been replaced, it went to Brookline, I think. But we have a new solicitor and now the same thing in those negotiations with us. Sometimes we've hired consultants that have helped us with specific ones. You know, we have a, well, without naming my most difficult union, we have, we have one consultant that helps us with a more difficult union than another that there's been a lot. But of those, you know, eight, now seven, I'm on my probably third turn with collective bargaining. I've never gone to arbitration with any of them. My approach, again, is that direct. I understand what you're doing. I respect where you're coming from. I don't take it personally when you come to me asking for 30% over three years. You know what I mean? I don't. I'm, a lot of people, I, you know, my predecessor, I had, I had a lot of making up to do because I came in with, with people that had bad feelings over negotiations before me for various reasons. So I had to do, you know, a lot of repairing of relationships. And I have very good relationships with every union president. And again, that's not because I'm giving things away. It's just how I deal with them in a respectful way. But I also don't see it as me versus them or the town versus them. These are, these are my people. These are all my staff. This, you know, I'm Chief of Staff. These, these are, I'm town manager. You know, this is the town and it's not me against you. I get why you're asking for those things. Do you deserve it? Absolutely, for the most, you know, part. And I'm going to ensure that I, if I can afford it and you deserve it and whatever it is, then I'm going to find a way to do it. And there's certain things that I, you know, prioritize over others in the negotiations with compensation. I'm a big fan of education benefits and, you know, and rewarding longevity if you stay there. So I want, you know, an educated, but I'm going to be direct with you. We just, we just finished our patrolman negotiations, not ratified yet, but we have an agreement. And they wanted to go back to the percentage Quinn bill. And I'm like, I can't, I can't do that, you know, for the newer people. I just, you know, I get it why you want it. But I just can't do that in the best interest of the town. I'm not, I go back to the sustainability. There's no way I could sustain those sorts of increases. But will I increase, you know, the flat amounts? Yeah. And here's my proposal, you know, to do that. But I'm going to be direct with them. I'm not going to be like, oh, you know, I'm not going to play around with it. I'm just, you know, going to be direct, explain why I can't do that. But here, let me do this instead. And I'll give them all those financial statistics that I have and show them. Here's, here's what we get for revenue every year. Here's my fixed costs, you know, for the most part. This is all I have left to spend. And they'll, they'll try to point to those other, you know, funds. And in some cases, you know, I have done that. I've used some of the ARPA money where you can do the premium pay. I'll give, I have given a couple of the smaller unions one-time payments in exchange for lower across-the-board percentages. You know, some people like that, some don't. Some unions do that. So I have done, you know, that to try to keep the annual cost lower. So again, it's, it's all a part of that. But I'm, I'm the head of, you know, all of those negotiations in the, in the, you know, town of Waymouth. And it's, you know, all but a little over, you know, 100 of the employees that are, you know, about non-union. But.
Good. Just, this is a big category, but just maybe with any interest of time, maybe a thumbnail about your performance evaluation system and how it really connects with the people on the front lines to the people in the top leadership in terms of overall strategy? You know, how does that work? How is, how are the people on the front lines connected to the overall strategy of the organization through the performance evaluation system? And how does that go in the other direction as well, from the top leadership down to the frontline employees?
Yeah, unfortunately, Waymouth is sort of, you know, in before us, lacking in sort of that. Because, because most of my, you know, department heads and leadership and the non-union folks are in a, in a salary table system that it's an automatic increase. You know, we have 20, 21 grades and each one has 10 steps. So there's no performance per se connected to that raise. It's an annual given increase. Obviously, I do review, you know, that, you know, basically during the budget process, it's, you know, I don't really connect either, you know, the cost of living for non-union that I decide what's affordable and what's done. You know, I don't, you know, connect to performance either because it's, you know, cost of living and you try to increase that. So we have some deficiency, I'll admit, in, you know, performance evaluations, other than just my, you know, personal, you know, interaction with them on a, you know, regular basis. I meet with them, the department heads on a revolving schedule to review, you know, their department, the staff. on a revolving schedule to review, you know, their department, the staff, express, you know, my feelings about different employees and, and my interactions with them and ask them about, you know, theirs. But formally, there really isn't a, you know, a system.
All right, Ted, forward to you.
So Ted, the next question's on land use and development. So he's talked about the school and the library and the fields. A lot of it maybe has been covered already.
When I think of, if I may.
Please, yeah.
The land use and the redevelopment, I think also of, so when I talk about those, those villages and our desire to redevelop, we did create overlays in the last seven years to try to spur, but it was, but it was corridor overlays. We, we have several minor routes, Route eighteen, Route fifty-three, three A that are in need of some redevelopment. So we created an overlay for those to try to spur some economic redevelopment. In addition to that, and have been successful at that, and again, have created specific zoning for different, these different villages. We just, we've done it for Weymouth Landing. Again, a project took off that had been stalled. That also came with the negotiated TIF for the commercial aspect of it that I helped negotiate to get that started. But it, it was a, you know, a hole in the ground. Well, it was a building, then a torn-down building, and then a hole in the ground for many years. That was just delayed. We actually got it going and it's now built a mixed-use facility. There's other places now around that that have been built up because of it. It's right next to a commuter rail station. So some transit-oriented aspect to it. We did the parking lot there. Parking's still an issue, like a lot of places, but we, we did redo it. And then now we've recently done it in Jackson Square, created some, you know, zoning, very different zoning because in, in, you know, Weymouth Landing, you know, it can be higher because it, it fits in, in Weymouth Landing.
Number three A there?
It's, it's the, so Weymouth Landing is the meeting point of Braintree and Weymouth and not far up is Quincy. So it's that kind of corner of the town where I moved after we built the new library and parks and upgraded the landing. Because you can walk to any, it's a, it's really a nice, you know, neighborhood that we did where, you know, there's literally everything you can walk to at this, at this point. But Jackson Square is a little more, so we limited the height in that zoning to three stories where you get a special permit for four. But try to, we have one, the Venetian is one of our more famous restaurants, Italian restaurant in Jackson Square. The owner of that bought up a lot of the properties, has some plans. And so we, we created some zoning. There's a couple other developers there too. So we created some zoning, special zoning there for the land use. And we, that's one of, that's adjacent to the turf soccer complex that we built too, which is also right next to one of our elementary schools. And so we, we've done that. But our, the biggest development in the town is, is the old Naval Air Station.
Oh, yeah.
You know, most recently called Union Point before that Southfield. Right now, it has maybe twelve hundred plus residential units there. But we've been the last two years working with new developers, Brookfield and New England Development are the two main ones to come up with a new master plan. They've been spending the last two years trying to, we call it Humpty Dumpty. Some of the, the land up there, the, the Coast Guard still owned it, so that went to auction. Luckily, the developers got it. There's still some other land that the last developers defaulted on and other people bought it up in auction. So we're trying to, they're trying to, you know, take care of that. But the other component to all this is that now that the school project, my, my Chapman Middle School projects is largely over, I've taken on, the mayor has me leading with the MWRRA on trying to get water, more water to our area and, and the South Shore. It's actually, they did a expansion study for, you know, use and redevelopment in a lot of these communities. So at least another dozen of them. So we've also started negotiations regionally. But we've already, actually today, I, we just, I just talked to the developers because we have a proposal for engineering services to help us with the application process of the, which is, it's not like a piece of paper. It's just a bunch of filings at once. That is the application, plus going before town council for approval. And so we have a proposal for this, if I am brought to partners, to help us with that. It's like four hundred thousand dollars just for that. So I'm calling the developer like, hey, how much are you guys kicking in? And hopefully most, if not all of it. And so I actually just got a message on the way here that, that's pretty good. You know, but that's going to be, you know, our biggest, you know, land use and development issue is, and that's in South Weymouth. But again, we're, in addition to that, the, the village centers that we're, we're still trying to revitalize with, you know, land use and zoning changes.
Got it. Thanks.
All right, great. I'm just doing a time check just for everyone. We're at about the forty-five minute mark. So I think Doc, you're up.
Yeah, with your external relationships, as Foxborough Town Manager, you would have relationships with many individuals and groups, including employees, citizens, local county and state officials, as well as colleagues throughout the region, throughout the region. You know, pretty much from dealing with the craft group on one end of Route one to a new bagel shop that just opened up two weeks ago. Please tell us how you would build and maintain professional relationships. And if possible, include specific examples of how you have done this in your current or past roles.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's very similar and almost identical to what, you know, I've done, you know, in Weymouth for the last seventy years, you know, from that small business to, you know, our biggest employer, South Shore Health. And, you know, a great partnership with them, actually with someone there that I used as a reference, I believe. No, I did. You know, because of that, you know, partnership with them. And it's, and it's, it's, it's been very positive. And it, and it's just that respect level, again, of understanding what their needs are and their wants, knowing what we need. There's always frustration involved. We have an old pilot program from them that dates back to the nineteen nineties that is, I would say crap for the town.
Yeah.
But it is. We can't change it the way it's written. It brings in less than a million dollars a year for us. And, and knowing if you drive by on Route eighteen, just South Shore Hospital itself, never mind the entire organization, it just should be, should be more than that. And they're, they're willing to, you know, sit down and talk, but you know you're behind the, so, you know, knowing that fight's tough, then we, we try to partner in other ways and get, get things other ways. And they've been a great partner in that whenever, when, when we had the COVID testing station, they were, they were that partner to provide that service at minimal, you know, cost, again, us using the ARPA money to do that. And then have been that kind of partner, have been, we had our EMS ambulance contracts expire in the last seven years. The mayor actually put me in charge of finding that replacement. We ended up picking South Shore Health, which, which was new in, in the area. This new healthcare, if you will, model of, it wasn't just transportation, emergency transportation. It was, it was an entirely new model and, and we had to educate. But that partnership we brought, you know, with them and then negotiated as part of that, they paid for new, for new dispatchers, you know, because you have to be careful on, on those kind of contracts about asking for too much. It's, you get in trouble very quickly if you, if you try to do that. But they did pay for, you know, because it's connection, they did pay for, you know, for new dispatchers, you know, with, as part of that contract. And we just renewed it, I think, yeah, renewed it and, you know, increased that amount a little bit to coincide with our expenses. So there are just other ways. We, we actually, in going from small stuff, we're redoing the closest intersection to them. We're redoing it for almost eleven million dollars now. Colombian Square, one of our villages, you know, the hospital's right next to it. But before that, we got them to pay to upkeep the intersection for us. We have, you know, whether it's, you call it adopted island, but it's a little more than that. But, but basically, they gave us money to help upkeep that. Now we're redoing the whole thing. But, you know, so we just, you try to find other ways and they've been a great partner. And even, even on the, you know, negative side of it, it's a good relationship. We had, we had a large water main break not far from them that impacted the water pressure to the hospital. They weren't thrilled with the communication with my DPW or water sewer, or water department. So we met and we, we created a new, you know, procedure for that communication. But it was, you know, it wasn't, you know, getting in a room and yelling at each other. It was like, I understand where you're coming from. I'm, you know, defending my guys a little bit. They, they say they, you know, did this and I, you know, I believe them, but let's, let's figure it out. So we, we developed, so even on the negative, you know, kind of stuff, it's still a positive relationship that we have with them. But then again, it, it's, it's, you know, the life, the pulse of, of any community is, is small business. And so we have a very good relationship with all of our small businesses at, at the mayor level, including me. And, you know, during COVID, we created a, you know, a relief fund for them. And, you know, and talked to them like, what do you, what do you need? Like, what do you need to, because we wanted our small businesses to stay in business during, during COVID. And so we created a, you know, relief fund. We waived renewals, license renewals for, for that year to try to help them as well. I think it cost a little over a hundred thousand dollars for, you know, revenue, but, you know, we did it and we, we didn't lose a single business during COVID. We had one move that took a check and then moved, but, but it was more size-wise. They needed bigger space than anything else. So they moved to a neighboring town.
The entire town? You didn't lose any businesses during COVID?
No.
That's unbelievable. I believe you, but that's amazing.
Nope. Since, actually, for other reasons, you know, getting leases and new owners and stuff like that, but not as a result of, of COVID, no. And, you know, to help keep them, you know, going. And so that's a relationship. And, and they give back too. We, the mayor has an annual, you know, donation, you know, raising money to, we, through youth and families so we can give families in needs toys and gifts. And a lot of the small businesses donate to that. And so we, we do, we go and film commercials with them for our local cable and, and show people that they've given. I got, actually, one of the best times I've had with the local businesses is when the mayor couldn't do that. I forget why. He might have had a concussion or something. I actually forget why. But I had to do, I, yeah, who knows. But I had to go do all the tapings with the small businesses and it was great. It was great to, to meet everyone in those small businesses and make that connection and whatever they need, they know they can, you know, call. We're going to, if we can help them in different ways, we, we will. And we have those, you know, connections. But if we need something from them too, or we need them to, you know, quit it, something, you know what I mean? Or, or, you know, clean up your dumpster or, you know, we're, we have that relationship where we can reach out. And for the most part, it's a positive one that ends in a, a good result.
Great. All right. So we've got three more. We haven't covered everything.
Okay, Ted. Communication and collaboration between departments, as well as with boards and committees, are crucial to the success of Foxborough. How would you work to not only ensure, but also enhance communication and collaboration?
I'm a big we guy. You know, when, when I write, even if it's, you know, to an individual, you know, department head and, and I'm wanting to know if, if something happened, I'm going to like, did we do this? Even though it made, I have nothing to do with it actually happening, but I still do the we. And, and I'm, I'm big on the team approach. I have no problem making the decision when the time comes and I'll make the decision. And if, you know, it's not always popular, so be it. But, but it's not going to be without the collaboration of my team. And, you know, they get, you know, we all get paid pretty well to, to do our job. And I expect them to do that. But part of that is, you know, advising me. And I think one of the keys to my success is I'm, I'm not afraid to not know something. I'm not afraid to say, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know whether it's a specific issue or broader thing, you know, might come to some, you know, obviously, especially on IT stuff. I'm like, what, you just talked over my head? Or, you know, some of, you know, the, you know, other, I'm trying to think of an example, but maybe some of the, you know, the planning stuff or something that I might not fully, you know, grasp because it's just not common. But it comes up and I'm like, you know, I, I ask them to explain that because it's, again, we're, we're the team. I don't need, I don't have that ego that I need to be right all the time or, or know everything all the time. It's, it's, I depend on my department heads and my staff for that advice and input. And that's how I approach things before I make that decision. Because again, I'm going to make it more informed than anyone else. I'm going to have all of that information before I make those decisions. And, you know, that's what they're there for. And again, that's, you know, part of their job as well as mine. So it's, it's a very, I create a very collaborative, in addition to my regular, my regular one-on-one meetings with department heads, sometimes division heads. I tell them, if you want to bring someone from your staff along, feel free. Me and the mayor do group, you know, department head, division head meetings as well. We just had one fairly recently about, you know, the budget forecast and all of that. And actually, I also announced I was a finalist here to all of them, so they didn't read it in the paper. But there was a collective boo, but that was okay.
[laughing]
But, yeah, so even that, even this, I, you know, kept them involved, you know, with, with what I'm doing here. So no one's surprised and everyone gets, gets what's going on.
All right, great.
So Ted, this is a question around citizen relations and government transparency. In my, I posed this question before, I lumped in sort of transparency and integrity together. So transparency in the way you communicate and integrity in sort of doing what you're saying going to do. But the question is, Foxborough is committed to customer service and transparency with our government and our services, services. So what would you bring to this commitment, this commitment around customer service and transparency of communication?
Everything that I've, I've done the last seven years, most notably, I think, as far as the mayor's office, is we, you know, we have three assistants in the mayor in, in the office. One of them was vacant. I suggested and we ended up creating a community information officer out of that vacant position to create that transparency, to share more information, to, to have someone that has kind of a lot of the answers in one place. So if someone calls and asks, there's this one person. So we, we now have a community information officer. Not a new position. I recreated the position that existed with those, with those duties. Both me and the mayor, in addition to that, and we argue over which one's more popular, but we both start our own local cable show. It says, he does ask the mayor where everyone can send in questions via email and he doesn't read them ahead of time. Well, sometimes he cheats, but I won't tell anyone though, I just did. But, you know, but he'll, people can just send in any question. The mayor, you know, answers them. I started Town Talk with Ted, not as frequently, but it, it's a little more in-depth. And I try to pick subjects that people are interested in but may not understand it, like how we come up with their tax bill or tax rate. And so I had the assessor in, you know, to try to explain that process. You know, I had our planner in to kind of explain, you know, that aspect. I had, you know, the school building, construction folks in to talk about, you know, the details of Chapman and how all that came out. There's a, oh, I had the vice chair of the town council and chair of the budget subcommittee come on the show and talk about how we develop the budget together, you know, between the town council and, and me. We have a very good relationship in doing that. And other, you know, more in-depth, nothing more than a, much more than a half hour. I try to make, keep it succinct. So I have gotten a few comments that if you're having trouble falling asleep, you want to watch my show. But, because it's, it's, it's the weeds, it's the weeds of government that I try to, but, you know, there's people out there that are interested in that, that, you know, want to, want to see how it works.
Hardcore, yeah.
Yeah. So we've developed those to just give more information to the people. We try to make everything we do, you know, obviously online and transparent. If anyone needs something else. anyone needs something else, uh, it's there for them. Um, but those are the couple of the bigger, more recent ways, um, that we've, we've, you know, during COVID, we, we have, you know, with the ARPA money, we have, um, again, I said, we had twenty-nine million dollars. That's a big chunk of money. We don't have to get permission from town council to spend it either, so it makes it even a little more. We created a, um, a survey, um, for residents on, on how they, with, with the categories that were developed by the feds, you know, of these categories, what are your top, I think we did three or five priorities. Um, we had over two thousand people, you know, respond to it, which, you know, for surveys, I'm not sure how many you do, but that's, you know, you're lucky if you get a few hundred, you know, of those. So we got over two thousand feedback on that. But, you know, again, transparency of, we have all this money, this is what we can spend it on, what's, what's that input that you want. And so as much as we can, um, you know, we try to do that. We just put up, um, we just, um, put up new message boards in a couple of our parks to be able to, you know, have information out there. We have one in front of, we put one in front of DPW as well, just to, you know, information. And obviously, local cable is a big component of, uh, sharing information.
So thanks, Ted. Um, just a, a quick follow-up in terms of delivering challenging messages. That's part of transparency, is delivering challenges, challenging messages, or messages that are unfavorable to a certain party or group. Any experience with that?
Uh, we're doing one now. And even though it wasn't directly ours, everyone's calling us, asking why their electricity bills are, uh, going up, and what are we doing about it? Um, and so we, we just met, um, we do have an energy consultant, uh, on board helping us look at ways of, of saving, not just for the town, but ways we can save, um, for the residents. But, you know, we don't have an answer per se. We have options for them, and so we, we communicate, you know, and for some reason, Engrid's telling them to call us, you know, thanks, Engrid. Where's the camera? Thanks, Engrid. Um, you know, so, but we have to message that to them, and they're not gonna like the answer, because we don't have a, a magic bullet to decrease their, their, um, bills. But we have options for them to look at. We are looking at, um, ways to consolidate, um, the, that expense, and maybe opt into a, a little cheaper rate, um, for those folks. But we're, you know, a few months away from, from doing that. So, uh, you know, but we're, we're taking it head-on. And, and as people write in, we're gonna have that, um, recent message, um, for them.
Okay, thanks.
All right, great. And then, as far as the final question, I know your form of town government's a little bit different where you are than, than here in Foxborough, but how would you define a successful relationship between the board and town manager?
Um, the, the progress we, we've made, and, and, because everything we've done, we have to get, including the budgets, you know, that, um, approval from, you know, for us, the town council. Um, when I was in Braintree, it was, it was the selectmen. And so you just, you have to have those, um, good relationships. You know, you might disagree on stuff, but for the most part, um, you're moving those, um, things forward and, and not creating, you know, animosity. Uh, there is some that's created. I'm not gonna lie about that. I'm, I'm not happy with, with, you know, some of the ways they, they, you know, do things, um, you know, but you don't let it get in the way of, um, the job. And, and so I, like I just explained, that, you know, I had the vice chair, um, of the council, the chair of the budget sub, and we have a great, you know, relationship. He was on the show, we're talking. And, uh, and I do the same with others, the, the subcommittees. We have a, uh, mental health and substance abuse subcommittee that we're going before. I have a great relationship with him, and we have, you know, we're in the opioid litigation thing, so we have a bunch of money coming to us. I'm working with them. We just had a meeting with, um, our health department and others today, but I'm gonna, we're going before them next week to, to work with them on how we spend that money and the best ways to, to do that. So it's just a constant communication, um, you know, with them and their staff. Uh, and, and one of my, um, favorite stories, if I may, when, when we first came into office, um, the incumbent, uh, Mayor Hedland beat the incumbent. Um, it happened to be, um, the executive secretary, which is kind of a town administrator role then, um, for the town of Braintree. She was a former, um, and while I was FinCom chair there. Uh, so I worked with her, Mayor Kay, uh, in Braintree. So Mayor Hedland wins, um, she's out as, after two year, uh, two terms. Uh, we come into the office for a transition meeting, just me, the mayor, and, uh, Mayor Kay, and, um, we hug. You know, we hug. Uh, I don't think the mayor, Mayor Hedland knew what, you know, so afterwards, it's like, what was that about? You know, but that was a relationship, even though we didn't always agree, and, and, and we just were in a election, um, you know, where she lost, you know, we still had that relationship that we built, uh, in Braintree. And, and I, I'm not gonna say I hug everyone, but, uh, but I do, it's important to me to have, you know, positive relationships with everyone I work with. And I, I'm not naive enough to think that's, can always happen, but, you know, the great, great majority of relationships I have, um, across town, including, you know, Braintree and, and Weymouth are, are positive.
All right, great. So that ends our questions. Any other questions from the board before I turn it over to Ted, see if he has any questions? Any questions for, for us?
I guess my, my biggest, um, question would be like, individually, and, um, you know, obviously, you have a big decision here, but you must have some sort of vision, you know, with a new town manager of what you want, you know, Foxborough and, and the relationship to look like, you know, a year or three years from now. So I'm just curious individually, like, what you're hoping this accomplishes, you know, with a new town manager. Um, but also, the, the other part of that, that I'm equally interested in is like, what don't you want to see change, um, or be different in, in, in the coming years?
Want to go the same way we went, start with Seth before? Sorry.
Um, so, um, I would say, we have a, a strong team of leaders right now, and we want to maintain that, um, to the extent we can. People, the opportunities are created, um, and there's turnover, uh, but we have a strong team. Um, there are opportunities that we're, are in progress, and other things that, um, we have yet to, um, sort of start working on. But we're, we're looking at making progress across initiatives, um, HR initiatives, types of things, um, land use development, um, financial, um, trending and, and types of things, more information in, in how we present and how we do, uh, build out budgets. So those are opportunities. Um, back to the land use piece, um, maintaining and not changing sort of, you know, Foxborough's a small town relative to a lot of places and relative to Weymouth. So maintaining that feel in the community of a small-town community while, um, still having reasonable and thoughtful growth across the areas that are, um, can, can handle growth. So, some of my thoughts for that.
Okay, so I guess maybe, I'm, I'm gonna answer the question almost like directed that if, if, if by chance you happen to be our town manager. So, I, I hope that's okay. So, I kind of feel like with, with what Seth was saying, we have great department heads, um, it's a pretty well-oiled machine here. And so, of course, I'd like to see that continue. What intrigues me a little bit is what you might bring to that well-oiled machine, because you come from a, from a lot, much bigger community with, um, with a much bigger budget. Um, I, I, I like the thought of, um, really looking at our budget very carefully, very, um, looking at it line by line, and really to see, like, you know, you know, where, where can we cut? And, and I'm sure there's places to cut, places not to cut. Um, I, I think, um, our next town manager, I'd like to see just our community really, you know, it is a small community, and just seeing, um, the communication still there. And, um, our town manager, maybe for you, it might be a little bit more out in the community, where, where it's a much smaller community. Does that, does that make sense? Am I kind of answering it gearing towards, like, if you, if you were here? Because whoever the town manager is, it may be a different vision. But for, for you being here, like, you almost having, um, the chance to be out more in the community, and our, our businesses, small businesses getting a chance to know the town manager. And so, I don't know if I answered it quite how you wanted, but I'm, I'm thinking about it, your question directly, directly, if, if it's you.
Yeah, no, that makes, that makes sense.
You know, one of the first things I'd do would, would be meeting, you know, all
the department heads, but also having someone here take me out and meet everyone out, out there, too.
Leah knows everybody.
Good.
Between all five of us, we've got it covered. So, you know, I'm not gonna repeat kind of the same things you, they said. I think it's a, a lot of that, kind of table stakes stuff. Um, you know, again, we have really strong department heads, strong police chiefs, strong fire chief. So it would be naive to say there's not process improvements we can make, or improvements we can make. But, you know, we do have a good team. So we're definitely not looking for someone to come in and like, you know, rock the boat. But you do have to put your own spin on things. Um, so I think a good cultural fit is also really important to us. Um, you know, we, as much as a board, you know, we may not always agree, we, there's a real respect for each other, and I feel like we have that as well, um, you know, in town hall and in various departments. We haven't even touched on the school side. It's like such a well-operated, well-oiled machine over there right now, that, you know, just don't forget that they, they do exist, and they are under the, the town manager ultimately. Um, but, you know, we've, we've, we've got some good things going on here, and we'd just like someone to put their mark on it and help us maybe bring some things through to the finish line. So we always have a lot of good ideas, but I think one thing we can, can possibly improve on is, is, you know, picking some initiatives and then actually seeing them through to completion, and then, you know, to another cycle of how can we improve those further.
Good. So, uh, you know, I, I think there are challenges ahead. There's always challenges ahead. You know, there's been a relatively stable environment here, is my take on it. Uh, e- even with COVID, there's been a stable environment. And kudos to the leadership that was here, the last town manager, like you, very hands-on, very detail-oriented, you know, rea- really effective in, in many, many ways. But that doesn't mean, as I think Leah just said, there aren't opportunities for improvement. Um, I like your approach to budgeting. I, I think the, uh, the approach to budgeting has been, you know, budget to a number, as opposed to how can we really get more money out of the budget to improve free cash, or improve opportunities to, you know, invest in capital, that type of thing. So, and I think your style is that. So that's gonna rock the boat a little bit. I would just say that, in my opinion. So, you know, that's one thing. Um, and, uh, there's been, uh, I think, an excellent relationship with the unions. Uh, all of the contracts are settled for three years, so somebody coming in doesn't have to worry about the unions. There's been very good labor piece here, you know, and I don't take that for granted, because I, I managed in an organization of fourteen unions. So if you have labor piece, that's a really, really good thing. That's the good news. The tough news is, you know, again, when there's challenges, you know, now you're gonna have to develop those relationships and, and test those relationships, you know, and really do what needs to be done, given the challenges that are before us. And I think you're coming into a stable environment, which is really, really positive. But with challenges, you know, you're gonna have to meet those challenges.
Guess being the last one, everybody said a lot of what I want to say, or would have said. Uh, but I'm glad you started with Seth first, anyway.
It's easiest.
Um, so you are coming into, you know, an environment where, you know, the last town manager was leaving, did a pretty good job over the last, um, nine years. I think if, if you are the one that, that does end up here a couple of months from now, you're gonna see a really pretty stable, uh, town hall. Um, not that you couldn't put your own twist on things going forward. Absolutely, you're going to. But, um, uh, but I think, um, you're gonna come into a place that, uh, really doesn't have anything earth-shattering going on right now, uh, and, and could be a good place to slide into and continue, uh, you know, the good job that everyone's done here in the community over the last nine years.
Just hearing those comments, I made a comment, and I remember, Bernie, to the search committee, that it's clear there's a component, uh, to this job of, of not screwing it up.
You got that.
And I did. I, I, I did. And I said it to the search committee, and I, and I also said that sometimes is harder, you know, than coming into a place that's in shambles and, and fixing it. Um, but, uh, you know, just, just, if I may, just on that, when, when the mayor and I came in, and again, new administration, um, we had very little turnover in our department heads because of, of, of a lot of what you were describing is, is that part of it wasn't, you know, the issue. There was, you, you know, you want the knowledge, you want the history, um, to help, um, move forward. And so we, we didn't, uh, come in, a lot of fear about it, but we didn't come in and, you know, start firing people. We, we kept almost everyone, other than, you know, a couple of people that retired. But, um, so that's important, uh, you know, you don't want to lose that kind of expertise and knowledge and management.
All right.
Can I ask one more question? So, the first thing you said to us was that you felt like that you weren't looking anywhere else, and you felt like this job was made for you. So now that you've gotten a sense of us, and maybe through the questions, like, you know, what the community is about, what's the number one thing that made you feel that way?
Quick question. Um, it, it is, I mean, it was, I mean, you had that list of ideal candidate, and, and the finance part of it was probably number one, is that that's that person, and that's my specialty, if you will, both in Braintree and, and here. And I know, um, I'm very successful in, in creating those budgets and, and sustainable budgets and finding solutions, uh, to doing that. But it, the other part of it, um, was the, the union relationship on that. And then I have very good relationships with, with the unions where, where I am. Um, the, the land use and the, the wanting to upgrade, but keep that, um, you know, feeling of, of the town intact is exactly what we're trying to do in our villages. Uh, but I also grew up in smaller towns, you know, growing up. I'm used to that, you know, everyone knowing everyone feeling. Even, even in fifty-six thousand people in Weymouth, you have that feeling. But, you know, growing up in Hingham, um, and even in Little, you know, more in Braintree, it was, it was still that feeling. And everyone knew everyone. Um, and I, and I love that. So I, I love, um, that, that small-town feeling with those bigger, you know, issues that have to be addressed. You know, that, those challenges and, and that balance that you want to keep. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking to go somewhere and, you know, sit back and put my feet up. I'm, I'm like looking for the next challenge. And, and just that small-town feel, and, and you, it was easy to feel it, um, just doing the research and, and being around. Um, but with, with still that challenge that's gonna keep you motivated, um, as a town manager. And so that's how, how it feels, you know, um, pretty perfect.
All right, great. Well, we, we are committed to moving this process along quickly. I think we don't want to drag this out, and it's gonna lengthy for anyone. So, you know, we do plan on, on talking more next week. Um, and, you know, I don't want to lock the board into a timeline that we're not comfortable with, but our intention is to, is to make some decisions next week. So more to come. And thank you so much for coming this evening.
No, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We just want to have a motion to adjourn this evening, and we'll continue on January 12.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right.